Okay. Everybody ready? All right. Okay, we will call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Tuesday, April 9th. And would the clerk please call the roll? Our lovely and talented clerk, Dr. Taylor.
Lovely and talented. You get that, J.J.? In a minute?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Our board, our roll call. Trustee Calvert.
Here.
Trustee Cordell.
Here.
President Simon Holland.
Here.
Trustee Kelly.
Here.
Trustee Minneto.
Here.
Vice President Raymond.
Here.
And I am here, as well as our students representative. Welcome back. It's good to see you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Madam President, everyone is here, and we have a call.
Thank you. Ananti, would you lead us in the pledge?
I don't have braces tied, so it's weird. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And before we get started, I did want to let folks know we have some folks coming from out of town and kids who want to come from schools to be part of the discussion about the school naming, so we are going to try to defer that one until 3:30. So we may do some shifts in our schedule for that. Okay, let's hear public comment.
John Appolito.
Welcome, Mr. Appolito. You're up.
Hi, my name is John Appolito. I am a parent. I have three kids left in the district. I'm a former teacher, and I'm the president of Protect Nevada Children. Yesterday, SB 403 was heard. It's a bill that would protect student data from free third-party ed tech vendors like Google, Edmodo, and dozens others. It would require districts to educate parents on the risks associated with the collection of student data by ed tech vendors. The bill was very well received by the senators. Numerous people and entities testified in support of the bill, including the Nevada State Education Association, Protect Nevada Children, Citizens in Action, Nevada Families for Freedom, and the Reno Sparks NAACP. The only testimony against SB 403 came from Washoe County School District. Why? You say you're interested, you care about students, you care about their data. You're the only ones in the state who object to this bill, and it's a shame. If you need more information, I'll be glad to talk to you later. These free ed tech vendors have way more data on our children than the Googles and Facebooks have on us adults. Remember, kids start using these free products in about first grade. They don't know what information is okay to share with these vendors. As you know, these free vendors are paid with student data. Some of these vendors are trying to learn a lot more about our children than schoolwork alone can provide. For example, the students' attitudes, values, and beliefs. One of them used in Washoe County School District, Edmodo, already had a major data breach, where 99% of the students who use it had their data stolen and placed for sale on the dark web. Then the entire company was sold to the Chinese. Experts agree the Chinese bought Edmodo for the student data. Parents deserve to know the data, student profiles created on their children, is now owned by the Chinese. Even before the Chinese bought Edmodo, many experts on the left and right wrote about how the data and the profiles these vendors create on our children will affect their future. These experts include, but are not limited to, here's a handout, Politico, The New York Times, Pittsburgh Post-Gazette Journal Constitution, or no, Pittsburgh Post-Gazette, Atlantic Journal Constitution, American Thinker, and the Electronic Frontier Foundation. It's all in there. The United States government can't even monitor and police what domestic ed tech vendors like Google are doing with our student data and profiles. There is no chance the government or Washoe County School District will be able to monitor what the Chinese do with our student data. It should not be up to Washoe County School District's -- can I finish the sentence?
Finish your sentence.
It should not be up to what Washoe County -- up to Washoe County School District's, when children start using these products and sharing data with free third-party vendors, it should be up to the parents after they are educated on the dangers. And that's what SB 403 would do.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito. Mr. Empi, welcome.
Well, welcome to all of you. Thank you for being here. So I'm a parent, and I'm speaking to you today based on a letter I submitted to this entire board, Ms. Davis, the executive committee at Washoe County School District regarding the decision to move the SWAS program at Jerry Whitehead Elementary School to Roy Gom. Well, I understand this but -- or this school district is faced with huge budget issues. I'm just here representing one child, maybe 13 children, and not just the children right now, but into the future, because removal of this program and placing it over on the west side of town where there are already three programs in the most affluent parts of this greater Reno Sparks community is devastating. And that's going to be a hard gap to fill. I think it's very short-sighted of you all to make such a decision, because once a program like that leaves, it usually is hard to get back. And I think you know that. And not to say what happens to the students that are identified in those communities at, you know, once the program's gone. So, you know, I do thank you for the opportunity to teach my daughter that life isn't fair, and those that have the power make the decisions, and the minority just go along with it, right? I don't know if we'll put her on a bus, hour and a half each way. Hopefully, I can work with my employer. Maybe I can transport her myself. It's going to be huge changes to our family, but I guess you would do that for your children, right? I'm just disappointed. Disappointed in all of you. And I can think of other places. Maybe the budget could have been changed or used differently. Something about a field at a new school that's going to be re-purposed in two or three years. Doesn't seem like a prudent use of taxpayers' dollars. I am interested in looking into charter schools and seeing what money I can get from the school district to fund that for my child to go elsewhere. And I would want the regular per pupil money, as well as the specific funds that were given to the school board by the Nevada Legislature for gifted and talented students, if I do choose to exercise that option. So I'll see it at Agenda Item 3.01. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Empi. And just to remind the trustees, we did provide Mr. Empi with a response to his concerns that the school within a school program at Whitehead Elementary School has only 13 students enrolled in it covering three grades. And so we would have to have a teacher that is teaching three grades' worth of content for our most academically gifted students. So it is based on enrollment, and as I mentioned to Mr. Empi, we will continue to look at enrollments and when enrollments change. We will certainly take another look at that. And in the meantime, we will continue to have gifted and talented programming at Whitehead Elementary School. It just won't be all 13 students crossing three grades within one program. Okay, next.
Nicole Killian.
Welcome, Ms. Killian.
Hi. Thank you for letting me speak. I pretty much echo everything Mr. Empi just said. And I appreciate you, Ms. Simon, the response that I've gotten from you as well, what you -- to respond to what you just said. My understating huge disappointment with the decision that's been made as well. There are 13 students there, but there are -- why are there only 13 students there? I've emailed a lot of questions. I've gotten sort of generic, for lack of a better word, answers that aren't exactly answering my questions, because we have a student in my son's class, our son's class, who was not tested blanketly with the other second graders when testing was happening. That mother found out testing was happening in other schools and had to push the district to test her child. So, but getting that information from gifted and talented program or the schools themselves is next impossible, because nobody tracks that information at the schools, and that information is not freely shared with us as parents of who's getting tested. We did get a generic answer of how the testing broadly happens, but that's not answering the question of why was the second grader not tested, who now is in that program. The other response of there's only 13 kids. There are only 13 kids, but those 13 kids and their families are being hugely disrupted by this move. And to what Mr. Empi said, it's hard for me to accept that the three schools remaining are in the most affluent parts of town. They are within 2.7 miles of each other and 12 miles of each other. I don't understand why we can't split those programs up. We're blocking off an entire portion of the city. And I would like to see, I'm curious to know what the counts are of the people. What are these minority students? How many minority students are in these programs? What's socioeconomic level? Because there's a lot of families who are hugely impacted. I'm going to have to change my job, or it's going to end up costing us more money for daycare before and after school. So this is a huge impact on these families. The other part of it I don't understand is why we can't -- our teachers are moving. So that tells me that our teachers are still being used here. Why can't we split those two schools that are within three miles of each other, but third and fourth grade at one, fifth and sixth grade at the other, and keep our third and fourth and fifth and sixth grade classes up here? Bust a few of these families over here. They can choose to stay there, or they can come over to our area of town. But disrupting all of these families is crazy to me. And the budget answer I'm getting is, again, sort of blaming up, blaming not our fault. If we can't figure out how to budget year to year, I got to figure out how to budget my books. If we don't have enough foresight for one year to figure out how to budget, I mean, that's a sad state of affairs for our district if we can't figure out the budgeting. I get budgets change. I get we're coming up against some voting right now. But year-to-year voting, I mean, if we can't figure out budgeting for one year, that's pretty pathetic for our children, and we have to deal with that with our child. Again, teaching him a lesson that life isn't fair.
Thank you, Ms. Killian. And I'd be happy to have our, someone from our staff talk with you further about how that one child was not tested, because we do test every second and fifth grader in the district. So not sure how that happened. And again, we did respond on our budget situation, because we get more than 80% of our funding from the state, and the state doesn't make those decisions until after we have to submit our budget. It does make it challenging. Okay, J.J.
Teri Larson.
Welcome, Ms. Larson.
Hi, my name's Teri Larson. I'm a parent of a child that goes to the Whitehead SWAS. I'm also the chairwoman for the district's Parent Advisory Committee for Indian Education. So my home is 22.5 miles from Gom, so I'm going to have to figure out how to get there. And just so you guys have a visual, I've highlighted the three SWAS schools that you are leaving. These are all the rest of the families that you are not serving. I mean, you know, you're busting them all the way from here to here. So just so you guys can see where the highlighted, those are the three schools that they're keeping. Whitehead was over here. So I don't know how that's fair. It's not really a centralized location for all students and families. And the areas where those three schools are, like the two previous parents said, they're affluent white neighborhoods. What about all the low-income, white and minority people that live in all these other areas? Number two, in your response to Ms. Killian, I read it, and you talked about enrollment numbers. Well, when a parent registers for SWAS, and then they're told, hey, we're going to bust you, one point, you know, it's going to take the bus to get an hour and a half to Gom, why would you want your kid to ride a bus for three hours a day? Why wouldn't you just have them go to the zone school? I know, you know, the SWAS is a supplement or opportunity for kids, but, and their families. But what kind of option is that, to ride a bus for an hour and a half one way? And I looked at the transportation schedule. You have students from Cold Springs, they get on a bus at 6:51 a.m. They don't get home from the bus till 5:00 p.m. I just don't think it's fair. And I have some questions. So what's the current demographic of SWAS look like, the socioeconomic and the ethnicity? And has the district done analysis on the representation of minorities in SWAS? And how is the district going to make SWAS more accessible for low-income families? Because, so for me, you, yeah, you do provide transportation to the SWAS, but the bus picks up at 7:30, and then it drops off around 3:30, 4:00. I work eight to five, single-parent household. How am I supposed to pick up my child at the site? I could pay for before and after school. That's thousands of dollars, because that's what I chose to do right now. Most people that live in my reservation can't afford thousands of dollars in childcare costs. Either they work, or they don't have transportation, so they can't be at the school site for the bus drop-off and pickup times. So what are they left with, just staying at their zone school? And so we get all this great information from the gifted and talented about how special our kids are, and how their brains are different, how they learn different. But when you don't have any money, what kind of options do you have? And so that's what, being on the committee that I'm on, that's one of the things that I'm going to start looking into, because I didn't know that there was only four SWAS sites. And I didn't know the locations and how unfair the locations are to all these other students that you're supposed to be serving. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. And I just want to clarify for the public that we're not eliminating gifted and talented programming at zone schools. It's just a change in how that gifted and talented programming is provided, which is unfortunate. We absolutely understand that.
That's all for this item.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Batshelder. Okay, we will move on to action to adopt the agenda. And again, we will probably be taking the school naming item out of order and make sure that we'll try to do that after 3:30, so some folks who are planning to be here can be here. Other than that, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Trustee Kelly.
Second.
Second by Trustee Dr. Taylor. Is any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We will next go on to our consent agenda items, which are 2.02 through 2.20. Do we have any public comment? Thank you. J.J.
John Appolito.
Mr. Appolito, welcome back.
Thank you. John Appolito, president of Protect Nevada Children. We've been asking for quite a while on 2.05, the Board Policy 5000. There's a list of 48 vendors that you guys named as school officials, and we've been asking for probably about two months if you have a contract with all of these vendors or not. And so far, we haven't been able to get a straight answer. I'm not sure why, but we're still asking. Do you have a contract with all of these 48 school officials or not? The other thing that we've been asking for a lot longer, two years ago, student email addresses were set up for all the kids without our consent. And about two years ago, 200 of us opted out of getting those student email addresses. My youngest kids were only in sixth grade then, and we didn't want them to have an email address. Without my authorization, the school district reestablished those email addresses for my three children. Since then, my wife and I have been asking the school district to please delete the email addresses that you set up for our children. We don't want the district email address. You've already proved that you can't keep it safe. It's already been breached. The email addresses have probably been for sale on the dark web with the 95% of the people in Edmodo, including their student IDs. Please delete my kids' email addresses for about the 15th time over the last two months. And also, on the ed tech vendors, the FBI Public Service Notice that came out September 13th, 2018, it says how problematic these free third-party vendors are. And I know you guys posted it on your website. It used to only take three clicks to find it if you knew right where it was. Now it takes five clicks. You buried it even deeper. It's, I know it's a CYA. You're not interested in warning parents about what's happening with these free ed tech vendors. And please give me an answer to when you're going to delete my kids' email addresses. They will never be using them.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
That's all on this item.
Mr. Lasik, can you add anything about contracts with third-party vendors? Not at this time? Okay. All right. Well, we'd like to have that information, because I know Mr. Appolito has asked in the past. Okay, and Mr. Cordell, you have a comment?
I was going to pull something. Did I do that now?
Sure, yeah.
2.10.
Okay. 2.10, which is possible action to provide final approval of proposed revision of Board Policy 9065, Board of Trustees' compensation expenses, so that'll be pulled for a separate vote. Is there anything else, any other items that people would like to have pulled? Okay, is there a motion for those consent agendas, agenda items 2.02 through 2.20, except for 2.10? Motion for approval, Dr. Taylor. Is there a second? Second by Trustee Calvert. Is there any other discussion on those? And as always, all of our questions about consent agenda items, as well as the responses to those questions that we had ahead of time, are provided as part of the public record, and they are posted outside. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll open 2.10, possible action to provide final approval to the proposed revision of Board Policy 9065, Board of Trustees' compensation and expenses. And the purpose of this item was not to change the Board of Trustees' compensation, which is set by the Nevada State Legislature at a whopping $750 a month, but to identify how trustee expenses, we have budgets for conference attendance and that sort of thing, to allocate that. Mr. Cordell?
Yes, going to be under 5C. We received a public comment, I thought was a good one, that addressed that 5C did not discuss the returning of supplies. So I would like to make an amendment to 5C to add language that upon the expiration of a trustee's term in office, that all supplies that were acquired be returned to the school district.
Mr. Lasik, do you want to respond?
David Lasik, chief of staff, for the record. I think the public comment is super valid. It is addressed in the board's orientation manual, but that's not readily available, I think, and transparent for the public. So I actually like the change and agree with the change, and would suggest that we pull it off and then bring it back for the next meeting with that change.
Yep, let's do that.
I would like to just amend my amendment to say applies and equipment.
Yeah, that's, I think, because the equipment is really the important thing, if anyone has been issued a laptop or a notebook computer, et cetera. Okay, then let's have a motion to make that change and bring this back to the board for approval at a future time, because we haven't had the opportunity to have that reviewed. So, yeah, would you do that? Yeah, because we didn't have a second to your other one, so.
I move to amend Board Policy 9065, item 5C, to add language, all supplies and equipment acquired by trustees to be returned to the school district upon the completion of his or her term.
And just to clarify, that's equipment and supplies that were purchased by the district for the trustee, because many of the trustees do use their own equipment, and they purchase their own equipment to provide for the job. Is that, you agree to that amendment? Okay.
I'll second, and I just wanted to add, so are we amending it here, or are we sending it back to staff?
We're sending it back to staff with that amendment to put it back through the process.
Oh, okay. My second's good.
Is that, yeah, okay. Okay, yes, Trustee Kelly?
I just had a quick question. I mean, when we talk about supplies, so we're not talking about paper and pencils and little things like that, I mean, because it's impossible to get back a pencil once you've used it to the nub and paper that you've printed. So is there a way that we can somehow specify what supplies?
And it does say printer paper and ink cartridges. I mean, you can't get back ink cartridges.
So.
Yeah. No. I think it really relates to equipment. Is that all right, Mr. Cordell?
Yeah, I could change to equipment. Basically, larger items that are paid for by taxpayer money need to come back to the school district when the trustee leaves.
Yeah, I think that's.
And I'm the second, so I'm good with just being equipment.
Okay, and that be sent back to staff to go through the process for future approval? Okay, everybody clear about that? Any further discussion? You have a motion, a second? Okay, hearing no further discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Great, thank you. And thank you to the member of the public that did provide that comment. Okay, sorry, what? Okay, we are going to delay a little bit on our 3.01 and come back to that, because our Director of Government Affairs is still en route from Carson City. So let's go on to our presentation and discussion item 4.01 on digital learning and teaching in Washoe County School District and Office of Information Technology Support. And Robert Sidford, our Chief Information and Innovation Officer, is here, and we have a very extensive and inclusive presentation about digital learning that you will lead us through. Welcome, Robert.
Good afternoon, President Simon Holland, members of the board, Superintendent Davis. Appreciate the opportunity to be here to talk to you about digital learning today. Just a clarification for the board and for the public, this presentation is not dealing directly with digital school days. That presentation's already been made to the board, I believe, and this is not actually going to touch on that. This is about our digital learning efforts generally in the district, which obviously encompass a broad range of efforts. And so this is not directly dealing with digital school days.
And this is for presentation and discussion only, so this is not an action item, so. Okay. Please go ahead.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Robert Sidford, Chief Information and Innovation Officer. And rather than having all folks that are listed on this presentation up here at one time, I'll call people up as it becomes relevant to the conversation. So, let's see, where's my, sorry. I guess I'm in charge of the clicker here. All right. Okay, so the, over the last few months, the board has made a number of different requests related to digital learning. And so I'm, we basically felt that, because each of these requests for information requires some background information around digital learning in the district, we felt it was better to consider each of these within the overall context. So we've worked these in to this presentation. So these four items here around online educational services or digital tools, as we refer to them, the use of G Suite, that's Google Classroom. There's been a request around, information around our decision to discontinue the use of that in the district. Student screen time, the concerns that have been expressed in some publications and by some members of the public around the use of screens and students' exposure to screens and the amount of time that that, that students are exposed to screens has come up. In addition to probably the primary and the initial request was around strategies to address the 2016 internal audit of the Information Technology Office. And the board has asked for information and recommendations around the IT resources and comparisons to other districts around that. So I'll be covering all of those in turn. And as you mentioned, President Holland, it's a rather lengthy presentation, so I appreciate the opportunity to be here. So to frame our work around empowering digital learning in the district, there's a variety of different elements that go into that effort. And if you look at this framework that we've put together around what it takes to put together a digital learning effort in the district, you see that on the far right-hand side is closer to students. And then as you progress to the left and down on that ladder, you'll see that's, those are the items that it takes to actually support those efforts within the district. So I'll be using this framework through the presentation, starting with the digital curriculum side and moving back to technology support services. So a number of mandates inform our practice in promoting digital learning and supporting our teachers and students in our digital learning efforts. The first, obviously, is our district mission, and I will actually read that. I think it's important, is to create an education system where all students achieve academic success, develop personal and civic responsibility, and achieve college and career readiness for the 21st century. And that's stated in our key documents, our strategic plan. We have a number of other policy mandates, specifically the strategic plan of We have a number of other policy mandates, specifically the strategic plan, objective one point three in that is to strengthen teaching and learning through technology and 21st century instructional strategies. We have a number of efforts that have been ongoing for many years around that. And then Board Policy informs our practice as well, two policies in particular, seventy-two hundred and seventy-two ten. Seventy-two hundred really covers, it really asserts our commitment as a district to technology's role in preparing students for 21st century careers. It asserts our commitment to one-to-one programs in the district, and those are articulated in our new schools and in a couple of other schools that have been able to do that through either, largely through grant money. And it also asserts our commitment to learner standard educational experiences, along with, and this is particularly important, along with keeping our students safe when using technology through things like filtering, digital citizenship, IT security efforts, and those kind of things, and I'll be talking more about those. Our district Board Policy seventy-two ten really articulates our commitment to having a district technology plan, which I have been promising for a while, and I assure you is coming very shortly. It's on its way, and I know you've been patiently awaiting that. And it also authorizes all of our internal information technology operations around data protection, data retention, IT security, all of our systems, our network management, and so on and so on, and I'll give you a little more detail on that as we progress today. Some additional mandates around student data, these are very important, federal and state laws, FERPA defines personally identifiable information, establishes rules for our contracts with vendors, so that's our third-party providers that provide important school services that we, that can be contracted more simply or more effectively than we could provide those services ourself. SIPA is the Children's Internet Protection Act, that requires us to conduct web filtering, which we do, and also requires us to educate all of our students about appropriate online behavior, and that's our digital citizenship curriculum through which we do that. COPA or COPA is the Children's Online Privacy Protection Act, and that regulates the sharing of data with third-party vendors, and largely that's a vendor-focused law, it's a federal law that requires vendors to comply with a variety of data protection pieces when they are using, when they're having student accounts, when students are logging into those services. And then we have some state law around this. Current state law is NRS three eighty-eight dot two seven two, which requires district contracts to protect the privacy and security of personally identifiable information, and I would add that currently, and I'm sure you'll hear this from Lindsay Anderson later, we have currently our Senate Bill four oh three, which actually requires written parental consent for third-party services that are not designated as contracted service providers under FERPA, in addition to some other provisions there as well. Finally, under mandates, we have the Nevada Academic Content Standards, which we consider a mandate, because there are a variety of technology components built within the Nevada Academic Content Standards, they're actually integrated within that. We also have a brand-new set of, and we're one of the leading states in the nation around the K-12 Computer Science Standards, so those are adopted standards for the state of Nevada, and those have just come in. We are also just about to get our K-12 Integrated Technology Standards. Those are about to, I believe they're out for public review right now, and they'll go to the State Board of Education shortly, so they'll be adopted, and they really address integrating technology standards within content areas. So we're looking forward to receiving those, being able to implement those. So those are the mandates. Moving into content around digital curriculum, I'd like to invite up our Chief Academic Officer, Deborah Byersdorf, who will be, I think, tag-teaming through this piece here, so.
Welcome, Ms. Byersdorf.
Thank you very much for having me.
So first, just looking at that, and I know this is kind of a lesson in how not to do a PowerPoint slide, so I apologize a little bit for that. There's another one later that's an even better lesson, but just to frame the conversation, this is really where digital learning impacts students the most, at the most impactful level and most visible level. So we have a variety of pieces here where we are working on making sure that students have access to a digital curriculum, and I won't read those off, but you can see those pieces there. And I mentioned that I would go through, just to give you an indication of how these, how technology is integrated within the standards that we're expected to teach our students and that we believe are important for preparing our students for colleges and careers of the 21st century. So here are just a few examples of standards, there's many, many more, but just a kind of a cross-section here. In the Nevada Academic Content Standards for English Language Arts, this is a kindergarten standard, so with guidance and support from adults, explore a variety of digital tools to produce and publish writing, including collaborating with peers. Again, a kindergarten standard. A second-grade standard, this is around using, deleting, storing information using a technology device, and making sure they understand that that is data. This is a middle-school standard, this is actually from the soon-to-be-adopted K-12 Integrated Technology Standards, I won't read that, but you can see that there are some fairly substantial concepts there that we're expecting our students to be able to understand and be able to use, and utilizing their use of technology for learning. Things like, you know, concepts such as encryption, HTTPS, secure websites, password strength, cookies, phishing, all of these other things that are going to be built within the standards that we're expected to teach our students. And finally, a high-school standard, the English Language Arts Standard, for, this is a ninth, the 10th-grade standard, and this is around integrating sources of information, including digital, for evaluating credibility of those sources. So you can see how ingrained in the standards expectations around technology are. So I'd like to turn it over to Debbie now.
Sure. Great, thank you, Robert. Again, Deborah Byersdorf, Chief Academic Officer, President Simon Holland, Superintendent Davis, members of the Board. I wanted to start by expressing to you, it's been a, it's been a lot of hard work, a lot of time that Robert and I have been able to spend together, just to get to the point where I think we're at today in the work that I'm going to describe to you. And I think academic side of the house and the IT side of the house, sometimes the two never meet, as I've learned more about that. That hasn't been the case in Washoe, and I truly think we're doing a lot to lead a lot of work that other districts in the state are looking at, and then maybe even further afield. So as I go through some of the comments I'm going to make, hopefully you will see that work. So I want to take you back several meetings ago, when you were kind enough to approve our kindergarten through fifth-grade English Language Arts adoption, and if you remember that presentation, I was joined, Kendra Fox, our Director of Curriculum Instruction, talked to you about that. We use the term guaranteed and viable curriculum, with the idea being that regardless of what school a child attends, and we do have transancy in enrollment in Washoe, that student would be guaranteed that he or she would see the same materials, the same curriculum, those teachers would be supported through professional learning onsite, offsite, to deliver high-quality curriculum. So when Robert and I and others started talking about this project a while ago, that was one of the drivers for me, that regardless of where our teachers teach, where our students attend school, they have equal access, they have equitable access to materials. So that's another reason why that adoption of the K-five curriculum was so exciting for us, because it levels the playing field, so to speak. So anyways, so as we, again, work through what we want to describe to you in this part of the presentation, is that digital curriculum must be available for all of our teachers to easily access, to easily be able to find, and then be able to take that information when they're working in their grade levels, or their professional learning communities, their PLCs, when we are supporting through various departments professional learning, whether it's Department of Professional Learning, it's our social-emotional learning, it's our equity and diversity, whatever the department may be, everybody understands what the expectations are. And that strengthening teacher collaboration, there's also, I know, some work happening down in Carson City, too, about how our teachers may eventually be recertified, so I see some changes that might be coming to that process. I see this as being another driver or support in helping that work as well. You're going to see the aligned, guaranteed, and viable curriculum for the next couple of slides, I believe. Also something, too, that I think I can speak for our Office of School Leadership, our area superintendents, who have been very excited and involved in this process as well, so that when they work with their site leaders, and their site leaders are in turn working with our teachers and all of our ESPs as well that are involved in this work, our area superintendents understand what it is, that they're supporting their schools and where the needs might be. So, I know we're going to jump back and forth, I'll talk for a little longer, then I'll throw it back over to you. So again, having an aligned curriculum reduces gaps and redundancies. It helps us, I believe, align our resources better, whether it's professional learning, whether it's supplemental materials that a school might look to purchase. We'll talk a little later, too, about some of our online supports for our teachers and our students as well. And it needs to be aligned to Nevada Academic Content Standards, because it needs to be preparing our students for that next level in their learning, especially when they're matriculating from our elementaries to our middle, and from our middle schools to our high schools. Okay, I'll take this one, too. Guaranteed and viable curriculum also requires full visibility, transparency, that people have an ownership in that curriculum. Digital curriculum, I'm going to, I think, stress here, I think it's important, it doesn't mean that it is a step-by-step, and this is what you say at this moment, and this is what you say next, is the teacher in the classroom. It has to honor the profession of teaching, and every classroom is different, and every school is different, but we need to make sure that all of our teachers have access to that curriculum. And then also, Robert and I have been working to, how do our parents and how do our families also get access to supports that they can help their children with at home? And then the backward planning process, good teachers plan with the end in mind, whatever that end might be, whether it's a demonstration of learning, whether it's an assessment, whatever the case might be. So helping teachers plan through pacing guides, and again, high-quality materials that we, as a district, have ensured are in our classrooms, also supports that the importance of having the end in mind when you plan.
All right, so at this point, I'm actually going to invite our 21st Century Learning Coordinator, Tara Graves, up, and she is working around actually building this digital curriculum, and I will actually try to not steal any of her thunder, and I think I'll just pass it over to her, rather than try to introduce too much.
Welcome.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis, President Simon Holland, the rest of the Board. Tara Graves, 21st Century Learning Coordinator. So the concept is that Team WCSD, that we are building a team of the departments, of the teachers, the schools, everyone across the district. We are using the Microsoft Teams platform, and I believe the next slide you'll see a very short demonstration video. But imagine it's a space not just for students to learn through a digital platform, but for teachers to collaborate with one another, for departments to, for the housing of the digital curriculum, all the resources in one place for teachers, so that everything is there when they're planning, and easily access for instruction as well. I am working closely with Curriculum and Instruction. Right now, they're building the digital curriculum notebooks. So imagine it's, you know, sixth-grade math, sixth-grade English, sixth-grade science, sixth-grade social studies, all of those are being built individually. And then our next phase is to work with GT and SPED and ELD, all of our other programs that are essential for instruction, to be kind of interweaving and meshing those strategies directly on unit plans and lesson plans. So teachers have everything right there that they need for the whole gamut of what students need in the classroom.
And I would just add, Robert Sidford, for the record, I would just add that, excuse me, that our first landing place for this is our one-to-one schools that are coming onboard in the new school year, so those three schools will be able to access this content sort of on a pilot basis, with the access being also available to our other schools as well.
Robert, would you explain to folks, so that everyone understands what one-to-one means?
Sure.
And what those three schools are doing, and what comes next for that program?
Thank you for the question, yes, Robert Sidford, for the record. So our district definition of one-to-one program, which is, I believe, in our Board Policy seventy-two hundred, and I'm paraphrasing, but it is that all students and staff at a school have access to a digital device for their own use 24/7. So basically, that means that all of those students have the ability to use digital technologies when and where appropriate for their teaching and learning needs.
And do we make accommodations for students whose families don't have Wi-Fi at home, for example?
So that, at this point, yes, and that's a national concern, that is being addressed in a variety of districts, and that is absolutely an equity concern for us, that we are looking very hard at addressing. We have a pilot program at one of our schools, Trainer Middle School, to provide checkout for hotspot devices, so they'll have internet access. The other thing I'll say is that we often see that internet access at home is higher than many would think in many of our, in most of our locations, and we are working hard to get data around that, so we can make sure that we're addressing the needs of all of our students to the best of our ability, but also that our one-to-one schools are very aware of that issue, and making sure that their curriculum, their teaching, their processes for turning in work, for all of those kind of things are in place, so that they can best serve the needs of our students. So for instance, just to get a little bit granular, the fact that we have made sure that students are using Windows devices rather than, say, Chromebooks, part of the decision around that was that you can't basically download a lot of information on a Chromebook, whereas you can on a Windows device. So it's much easier to have content that's loaded onto a computer when it's taken home, even if it doesn't have internet access.
It's already downloaded, it's already there.
It's already there.
Okay.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, is this the one you were referring to, Robert?
Yes.
Yeah.
Tara Graves, for the record. So this is just a really quick snapshot of a second-grade teacher community, and many of you've seen Teams already, probably, and so the teacher can access all of their curriculum through the Team. They can also have conversations. This is a look at the notebook that they would have access to, for example, that's the second-grade math curriculum, digital curriculum notebook, in a OneNote notebook. Those are lesson plans, that's a lesson plan there, and on the side you see the essential strategies that I discussed, 21st Century Learning Special Ed, GT, and so on. Those would be listed right on the page within a lesson plan, so that they can integrate those strategies seamlessly, without having to go hunt down separate resources for those. Also, in the conversations piece, second-grade teachers across the district can reach each other for support and sharing of resources and collaborating.
Robert Sidford, for the record, excuse me again. Obviously, that's a little difficult to see on a small screen in a large room, but you can see how, from a desktop, that would look rather different. The other thing I'd like to add with that is this is a work in progress, we recognize this is a work in progress, this is going to take us, you know, this is an ongoing project that's going to be happening over a number of years, to make sure that we have our curriculum adequately represented here, because our one-to-one schools, starting up next year, our middle schools and, pardon me, elementary, an elementary school, we're focusing there first, and there's obviously going to be a number of issues we need to work through around proprietary content and various other things. So this will be, you know, we're excited to begin this work, but it will not be necessarily an entirely holistic set of resources that would require that a student can only be on a device. I don't think that's the intention here of anybody in the district, just that it's more accessible in a digital format for all of our students and all of our teachers.
So just a quick question, and I don't claim to be any kind of a high-level user of technology, but... of technology, but part of the issue, and as you all know, we've had a lot of parents and teachers who have expressed concern about losing the opportunity to work on Google and, on the Google platform for their educational efforts. And so what I want to make sure I'm understanding, so you Tara, and your team have provided curriculum supports right in the Teams platform, and you're developing that for each grade, or how is that? I mean, that would seem to be, if you had to do that on Google and Teams, since you can't download it from Microsoft Teams to Google, that would seem to be a big deal.
Yes, Tara Graves, for the record, yes, that's the goal. So we're gonna have it all living in, the curriculum will be all in OneNote notebooks, and those are easily integrated and pulled into different Teams.
Okay.
That's the idea.
So you're gonna be providing that level of support for every integrated curriculum at every grade, is that what we're moving toward?
So what the plan is that as CNI prepares the content in the notebooks, then I take it to GT and Special Ed and SEL and Equity and Diversity and 21st Century, and we start putting all of our lenses on the resources. So it's quite an undertaking.
Wow.
Deborah Byersdorf again, for the record, yes. And Tara's been amazing working with our Curriculum and Instruction Department. It's a big lift. I mean, it absolutely is a big lift, and we're focusing right now on elementary and middle with plans into next school year to start then on our high school curriculum. But it's keeping, it's keeping our CNI folks and shortly other departments, gonna keep them very busy for a while. And, you know, and it's been, you know, we've had a few bumps, and we've had, you know, just trying to figure it out, not least of which, just people understanding the platform itself. You know, understanding what Teams, you know, is and can be. And I know a little later, Robert's gonna talk more about the move from Google, but yeah, we've had a lot of conversations. Tara's and her team are leading a lot of training. We're training our site administrators. We would like to have them all trained by the end of the school year, I believe it is, into next summer. So our leadership team has all been trained on Teams, are lots of folks, more and more, getting trained. I don't know if you all have had a training yet on Teams, okay, well, there we go, Tara.
Not as trustees, no. And just adding to that, so the good news is that this provides an opportunity for equitable access, no matter where a student is in school. You mentioned, Deborah, the high transancy level we have in this district, and students will be in a different elementary school, perhaps, you know, three different elementary schools during their time with us. So it does provide support for equity. And I also understand, this isn't meant to be restrictive, it's a sort of a jumping-off point for teachers to have that support, that backend support for the curriculum so that it is aligned, but it's not restrictive, it's not a lockdown on what they can use for curriculum.
No, absolutely not, but it is standards-based, and there is an expectation that our teachers are teaching to the standards. And I think one of the great consequences of this, so to speak, is, you know, the, again, the recent K-5, or K-5 ELA, English Language Arts adoption was five million, I forget the exact amount. It will ensure that we are doing what we need to be doing with using that curriculum. So I think that's a good, you know, being stewards of taxpayer money and ensuring we're using the curriculum that the board has approved for adoption.
That's great. Okay, yes.
President Simon-Holland, Tara Graves, also thinking about people, our new teachers coming onboard as well, also give them a really big jumpstart on implementing curriculum with fidelity, especially if they haven't attended a 21st Century Learning training or an EL training. It kind of gives them a good starting place.
That's great, that's great. Should help substitutes and everyone, so, great. I know we use that word fidelity a lot, and this will help us to implement our curriculum with fidelity. Okay, thank you. Okay?
All right. Robert Sidgford for the record, I think I'll, I think we're, I'll invite, yeah, I think we'll change guard here. Thank you, thank you both. And I'll invite up Joe Gallegos, who is our Information Technology Director, and we'll tag-team a little bit here as well. Welcome.
Welcome, Joe.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
All right. So moving sort of down into supports for making this work happen, the first of these elements is around a digital learning ecosystem, which is really what we're talking about when we're talking about Teams, the Teams platform, Office 365. This is our way of thinking about what are the digital learning pieces, what are the building blocks of making digital learning happen within our district? And what are the sort of, what are the platform pieces on which a curriculum, on which these tools can sit to be delivered to students and as a collaborative piece for making sure that there's equitable access across our district? So you can see there that, a number of elements there, equitable access through these digital tools. This is where students and teachers would be accessing core digital communication and collaboration tools, AKA Office 365 at this point. We'll be talking more about that decision in a minute. And also making sure that we are being very careful and thoughtful about the use of our third-party digital tools. And I'll talk to you about a framework that we're using for making sure that we're careful about that as well. So this concept around a digital learning ecosystem is, just to reiterate, important for building our digital curriculum on top of. So just a visual here, I think this is probably the best way to think about this. If this box represents all of our required digital learning and teaching functionality, we're gonna put a few things into this box so that, you know, just as a visual aid for understanding this process for selecting how we're going to be using particular tools. So the first piece of this is obviously our standards-based curriculum, our adopted curriculum, and our supplemental resources that sit on digital platforms. So we have a variety of these. Digital pieces are incorporated in all of our adoptions as of the last couple of years, two or three years. And there are also a number of supplemental resources that are used specifically through our Office of Academics to support teaching and learning. And so those pieces form one part of our digital learning ecosystem. The second piece is to provide a digital learning platform. You may think of this, you may have thought of this in the past, as a learning management system, a content management system, a content and learning management system, there's a variety of different ways to look at this, and a variety of different tools that have been used in the past. Some of these that have been used in the past, Canvas is one of those, Blackboard, there's a number of others, various third-party vendors actually use, have a variety of different tools that could be considered a digital learning platform or a learning management system. With, over the past probably two to three years, the Microsoft Office 365 tools have become really a set of tools that really operate together and integrate together to really be a learning management system in a sense. And so what, the point here is that to make sure that we're consolidating on a single platform of tools allows us to do a number of things. I'll actually talk about that briefly when we, when I talk about the comparison between Google and Office 365 and that conversation. So if you wouldn't mind holding on to that thought for just a second.
Can you, I'm not familiar with Sway. What is Sway, or what does Sway do?
Sway is actually...
I know I'm out of it, David, I know. He's laughing at me.
Sway is actually a sort of a...
I do know what WhatsApp is.
For the record, Robert Sidgford, yeah, WhatsApp and Sway are not even comparable.
I know, no. I'm not comparing them.
We don't hide things in Sway.
No, I'm not. Anyway, what does Sway do?
Yeah, so Sway is actually a presentation tool. It's, think of PowerPoint on steroids, I guess. It's a way to present information in a very graphical format that's, it's hard to describe, it's better to watch, but it's really sort of a combination between a magazine and a presentation. It's sort of, it's very, you can bring a lot of multimedia into it. It's a way to present a lot of pictures and text, and so present things in a much more interesting and thoughtful way. So I've actually seen, I've toured a one-to-one school where students were using Sway for, I think it was a community service project, where they were actually building sways around the project that they were developing and working with the community. It's really very, very interactive, very collaborative potentially, and a great tool.
Great, thank you.
Yep. So the point, the overall point here is that this, these tools within, and that's actually a good example of one of the tools within Office 365. It's a selection of tools, it's sort of a smorgasbord of tools that are all integrated and interoperable, and you can add one into another, you can put one in a Word document or a PowerPoint, or, and so they integrate nicely. So this is really our platform that we own the data within that. So when we provide students with a user account for this, it's a single-user account that uses a single platform. Now, this doesn't do everything that we need from digital learning tools. There are, there is additional functionality that is not represented in what you see on the screen right there. And so we, what we are moving towards is a system where we are approving online educational services, that's the technical term for apps, digital tools, all of those things. Basically, anything that a student would need to log into that is a third-party vendor. Online educational services is a catch-all phrase for that. So we're being very thoughtful around, okay, which ones of these do we really need to acquire and enter a contract with those vendors? So that, as you can see, is a, you know, sort of the last piece of that box of all required digital learning and teaching functionality. So this really allows us to say, to be very careful about which of these tools that we need and which do we not need. So we are reviewing these, and I think that's the next slide, actually, no, it's not, apologies. But we're actually reviewing these for their functionality, for their educational purpose, for contract provisions, for data security, and all of those kind of things. And that will be launched for next year. But this is our ecosystem of digital learning functionality right there. So this brings up the question of, that was a request from the board about why, and I know a number of community members and teachers have asked the question of why did we, why have we settled on Office 365 tools as opposed to Google tools? And there are a number of arguments both ways. And what I'd like to do is actually present the reasoning and the rationale that has gone into selecting the Office 365 tools over the Google tools. I think you can see from the previous conversation the importance of a single platform to make sure that we're not having, students have multiple accounts, having data in multiple places and those kind of things. So I'd just like to go through these six items in a little bit of depth, because it was a board request around why, why Office 365 and not Google. So each of those six things I'll take in turn, I won't read those off at this point. So first, required features, so this is really teaching and learning features. And so we had, we did a number of different consultation efforts, and these are ongoing, by the way. You can see some of those are in the future, or one of those is in the future, and others of these are ongoing. These are groups that we have worked with to make this kind of determination, to determine what are the things that this digital learning platform needs to do. We have our 21st Century Leaders Network, which Tara actually oversees, and that is teachers from across the district representing virtually every school. They come together four times a year to do professional learning around digital learning and teaching. And they are really some of our vanguard of digital learning teachers in our district. So they're a good sounding board for what kind of functionality we require, what's happening out in our schools, how are we using digital technologies to enhance and support learning. Our Technology Advisory Group is a group that is made up of principals, teachers, and some central office folks to basically bring technology issues for discussion, including this. And that's another good sounding board that has more of a policy kind of bent to it. Digital School Days focus groups occurred, and some of the feedback from them was, can we have a single platform because some of our kids are logging in multiple times to different tools? Our Team WCSD, which you just heard from Tara about, we have a steering committee for that, which is heavily focused on principals and teachers to make sure that that work is responsive to the needs of our schools. We did an educator focus group around Google and Office 365, and we have a student focus group that's being facilitated, co-facilitated by myself and our Student Voice group within our Office of Accountability around this issue as well. And these are focused on the kinds of functionality that we need out of these tools. Okay, oops, apologies. So common themes that have come out of this, out of these consultation groups, productivity and collaboration is important, consistent selection of supported digital tools, there's a definite need for teachers that, to have support for the use of these digital tools rather than being off on their own, so professional learning around that. There's a need for accessibility tools to help not just our students with special needs, but also other students who can use accessibility tools such as things like immersive reader and translators and a variety of other things. And then obviously, more technology access is a common theme that we hear all the time from schools and teachers. I'm not gonna go into the pros and cons of the different tools, but this is just an idea of how we have looked at the different functionality within Google or G Suite and Office 365. So again, I'm not gonna go into the details here, but you can see that both are really a platform of a variety of different tools that have a variety of different functionality. And in large part, these are quite comparable. There's some differences, but in large part, they both serve, you know, 80 to 90% of the need for teachers to have that common platform and the tools that students would need to use. All right. The second point in comparing Google and Office 365 is the needed support. So from an IT perspective, if we are running two different digital platforms, we duplicate our need for systems administration. There is a substantial amount of effort that goes into managing a G Suite domain and an Office 365 Active Directory-based domain. And so device management, user accounts for each of those, email for each of those. And then when we talk about some of the compliance issues around IT security, we're securing two different domains. Our e-discovery functions, where we need to go in and find something, that's, we have to do that in two different places rather than one. So that's a concern that is a support concern, obviously increased technical support. For teachers and for students, professional learning around how to use the tools, if we've got two different platforms, if we're focused on teaching and learning, yes, there's, the counterargument is they should be able to operate in different domains, and we agree with that. But also that for a teacher, preparing lessons in two different platforms is very challenging. Cost, there have been issues raised around cost. The fact is that our Microsoft services, we actually license those on an annual basis. And so our user licenses, currently we have 92,798 user accounts, that's from a couple of weeks ago, so that'll be a slightly different number now. But we also, as part of that licensing, that is all of our district operating system licenses, so all of our Windows 10 licenses, as well as older versions of Windows across the entire district, for all of those user accounts, for all the devices that we have that are Windows devices. That includes our server licenses, so that's all the internal data center pieces that, and our servers in schools, so licensing for those. Our SQL, that's basically our database licensing that we have as part of that license. Our device management pieces, we also have Minecraft, which is a really good tool for computer science education, which is coming in. And all of this we get for approximately, and again, this number varies slightly based on the number of user accounts, but for $6.62 a year per user account. So I would challenge you to get all of the Microsoft services on a personal basis for $6.62 per year. So the point here being that we are really, as an enterprise system, with 64,000 students and 92,000 user accounts, we need an enterprise system to manage that. And it's impossible for us to run an enterprise network without these tools. So when we look at G Suite, the argument, and it is a valid argument, that G Suite is free. G Suite is virtually free to school districts. The issue for us is that because we also use Microsoft services, and we really have to use those, our entire network is a Microsoft-based network, G Suite does not incorporate those tools. So the free parts are the more visible parts, and we would still require the Microsoft services to be used. So we're really talking about adding another layer of support for the G Suite services that we just simply aren't able to maintain at this point. that we just simply aren't able to maintain at this point. So I recognize that's an IT argument around cost to add on to the educational and teaching and learning arguments as well.
That's just, that's a really important point for us to, to kind of make sure everybody is, is clear on. So even though those Google, the Google suite of tools is free, just as we saw with what Tara's doing and teachers are doing, all of that would have to be replicated and supported on a second platform. So even though we don't have to pay a user licensing fee for those Google tools, we, we have them through Microsoft, we have to use Microsoft for the enterprise functions, the business functions, et cetera, of the organization, and we would have to duplicate support and curriculum and all of those things, even though Google licensure would be free.
For the record, Robert Sidford, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, uh-huh.
Thank you, Madam President. So Robert, just to clarify, jumping onto that then, and we are already paying for Microsoft.
Yes.
Is there an additional charge by, by not doing the G Suite and really putting, so to speak, going all in?
That's a good question. So the Office 365 tools are integrated within our licensing, they're not separable from our licensing.
So we really already have access to that?
That's correct.
We just haven't been using it.
There is no discrete additional cost to the Office 365 tools. So when we're comparing the Office 365 tools to the G Suite tools, the teaching and learning pieces, there is no discrete additional cost to that. Yes, they're incorporated within our licensing.
I thought so, I just want to clarify, thank you.
I, I will, I will say on behalf of those parents and teachers that we have heard from, many of them have built their own educational tools within the Google platform. And so, you know, some of that development and support has already occurred, and those people have invested their own time in developing those things. And so there is, there's an opportunity cost that we lose because now that all has to be recreated in Microsoft.
For the record, Robert Sidford, yes, that is absolutely true. We are definitely sensitive to that, and that is where we've been very careful to make sure that we're consulting with teachers and schools. Obviously, we can't, we can't run focus groups with every single educator and every single school, but we do feel we've done a very thorough job of, of making sure that these decisions are based on, you know, exigencies within the actual schools. And so, you know, we, on the other hand, though, we do recognize that because the Google tools have been around for a long time, and they have been free, that a number of our educators have really dived into that and done fantastic work. And, you know, in the past, our 21st Century Learning Department had directly supported those tools because that's what was available. And so we're just in a different environment now, some of the IT security issues around things, the licensing again, and the support issues, yeah, it makes it a different conversation. But having said that, we're very sensitive to the fact that a lot of teachers have done a lot of work and a lot of really amazing work. And I speak as one who was, oh, I won't speak to my amazing work, but I did use the tools.
You had drunk the Google Kool-Aid. But, and, and it's not only our educators, there's a tremendous amount of open source educational material that's out there that has been developed on, on Google tools, so...
So for the record, Robert Sidford, so the, one issue with that, and Tara could actually speak to this better than I can, but the reality is that the flexibility of the Office 365 tools allows us to bring in content. OneNote allows, allows a variety of different pieces, different types of content to be brought in and as native text and in different formats. And so it's very, very flexible in the way that it can be used. So we're, we're finding ways to bring in information from the standards, from lesson plans, from curriculum documents that are really living within that, that tool. So it's becoming much more easy to do those kind of things than it has been in the past.
Even if they've been created on the Google platform?
That's correct. Yeah, in fact, there are tools to directly convert Google data to Office 365 data.
That had to happen eventually, yeah. And just, just, just a quick disclosure, my daughter works for Google, but she has no role in any of this. She doesn't benefit from our participating in Google or not, so I just wanted to put that on the record for people. Yes?
Thank you, Madam President. So will there, so will there be an, an effort then for, for the teachers that may already have invested so much of their time and, and energy into developing their own tools on Google to help them convert and train around, to get some support around that to, you know, kind of minimize the damage to an extent? Because that's a lot of hard work many have done.
For the record, Robert Sidford, yeah, and we, and we certainly recognize that, I appreciate the question. So we've, we've already posted on the website tools to actually convert that information. I'm not suggesting that that's just because you can convert the data, that means that there is an additional work in converting that, and actually using the Office 365 platform. There is additional work in that, I will readily concede that. I do think that the, the cost-benefit analysis around this of what are we gaining in terms of some of the things that Iris Orf was talking about around our guaranteed viable curriculum, the ability to really have an equity lens on this to make sure that all of our departments and programs have a lens on our curriculum and make sure that that's available to teachers at the point of need and for students. I think that that is a really important consideration, and so that's one of those areas where, yes, it's a difficult decision, yes, we recognize that and we're sensitive to it, and we have the supports in place. There is, there's a lot of training around the Office 365 tools as well, and I'll be talking about, Microsoft has actually committed a lot of resources to our district in terms of training our administrators and teachers as well, and are continuing to work with us on that as well.
As we have the ability to do it, it would also be great to make that available to parents who, many of whom are very involved in their students' technology use and may have their own questions about how's this transition going. So it would be great to be able to make some of that available to parents as well.
Yes, and we've, and we've actually initiated a conversation with our Penn University folks and, and board members as well. So, for training, so we'll certainly reach out there. It's a powerful tool, it really is a powerful tool. All right, so moving on, and I'll be as brief as I can with this. Legal compliance, obviously, we have, and I mentioned the mandates that we have around some of these laws, federal and state laws. We have significant district effort in place to comply with those laws, and by standardizing on a single platform, that helps us to do that. And PTAC there, and I'll be talking about that in just a minute, that's the Department of Education, the Federal Department of Education's Privacy Technical Assistance Center, and I'll mention their guidance in just a minute around, that we're complying with around, making sure that we're compliant with these laws. Second last piece, data privacy and security. Obviously, we are incredibly sensitive to the fact that student data is, should be protected. Our students should be safe in their online learning, just as in their physical environments. The reality is that putting more data in more locations means there are more opportunities for problems to occur, for breaches, for data loss. Now, obviously, we're protecting to the, to the limit of our abilities to, you know, protect against these things, and I think we're doing a fantastic job, actually. But the more places data sits, the more opportunities there are for, for these things to happen. More user accounts means more opportunities for hacked accounts, for phishing attacks, those kinds of things. And the more digital learning tools we use, the more third parties we, we incorporate, the more opportunity, or the more requirements there are for us around monitoring and remediation of, of issues, and honestly, the, the greater risk to users in the district. So we're very sensitive to that, and standardizing on a single platform is, is an important step in making sure that our students' data is safe. Finally, in this piece, our, and we've talked about this at length already, this enables a digital curriculum platform, a single platform empowers us to provide clear communication and collaboration around a set of curriculum resources. If it's living in multiple places, we cannot have a district-wide conversation around this, we can't support our teachers as effectively as we might in using this curriculum. So that's just sort of the bottom line there. All right. So, online educational services, this is that, and just to reiterate this slide here, this is that section on the top right-hand side of this. So these are tools that we're using, we're in the process of finalizing a system to make sure that we're really only using those tools when we can't provide them through other means. So when they're not, when we can't do what we need to with the Office 365 core platform tools, we will use other tools for that. So just, just a reminder that these are supplements to our, our core learning platform tools. So I mentioned the Privacy Technical Assistance Center, and they have issued, this is through the U.S. Department of Education, they've issued a number of guidelines or suggestions around making sure that students are safe when using digital tools, and we're working to comply with those, to use those as guidance, to make sure that we are, we're doing everything possible to protect student data. And they say that establishing a master list of digital tools is important, we are finalizing that process. We are also establishing district-wide policies for evaluating and approving these tools, so that the, so making sure that the lens on those is both an academic lens and a privacy lens and a contract lens and all of those things that are in place, legal review, all of those kind of things as well. And that we're evaluating those each on a case-by-case basis. Under FERPA, we, we can designate these vendors as providers that, sorry, I forgot the term, contracted service providers operating as school officials. But we can only do that if we're exerting direct control, which basically means a contract with those vendors. So we're, that's part of our process to do that as well, to make sure that we have that control over them. And then finally, and actually, that's part of the same issue, is that ensuring that we can provide that consent under FERPA or obtain parental consent. And so we'll have a system in place for that that we'll be launching for the new school year. So this is just a summary of basically what I already said there, which is we're reviewing these for contract provisions, for compliance with federal and state law, and then we're designating as appropriate these vendors as contracted service providers under FERPA to make sure that those are, those are contracted vendors.
So this is an answer to Mr. Appolito's question about whether all of our educational vendors are contracted with the district, and that you're saying it will be in place by the beginning of the school year? Is that, or is it in place now?
This is, this is, this will be in place for the new school year. I can't comment at this point on that particular list, but this is for, specifically for third-party vendors using, for digital tools.
Great.
That list includes other contracts as well that I can't speak to, but the, for, for digital tools, online educational services, that, that will be in place for the new school year.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so moving down the list, professional learning, and I'm going to be very brief around this because obviously, professional learning encompasses a lot of different things within our district. I'm only going to refer to a very narrow subset of our professional learning, specifically around digital learning, and that's our 21st Century Badge Program, training for Office 365 for, for our teachers and administrators, the safe use of digital tools, and then collaboration among teachers. So again, being very brief, this is just a quick overview of that. We have a 21st Century Badge Program we've presented to you in, over the last, oh, five to six years, I believe. That is focused on integrating technology appropriately and meaningfully so that we're advancing student learning and not just using technology for the sake of technologies, for the sake of using technology. So making sure that those, those uses are meaningful in our classrooms. We have significant support from Microsoft, that they are actually helping us with a lot of training for, for our educators, and that's ongoing. We believe that will continue into next year, and certainly, there's a heavy focus on our new one-to-one schools, but it's also available for our teachers beyond that, those settings. And this helps us to provide some consistency in our professional learning and training, and this focusing on a single platform allows us to make sure that we're doing the best we possibly can to support our educators in the use of those tools. I promise you that would be brief, and that one was brief. So moving down again into devices, so obviously, this is the piece of, this is the most visible piece of digital learning in our schools, is where a student and a device kind of meet and engage in the learning experience. So to support that, I just wanted to share kind of where we are as a district in that to give you an idea of the scale of what we're dealing with here in a, in a fairly large school district. So I'll talk briefly about those, those issues there on the list, but just to give you an idea of where we're at. So we have, and again, these numbers are a couple of weeks old, but, and varies based on where these are in the school, and so there's a number of different pieces of clarification around this, but these are the best numbers we have at the time. Forty-one, over 41,000 Windows devices in our school district. Just imagine 41,000 computers sitting in this room. I don't think that'd fit. We also have 20,000 Apple or iOS devices, those are largely iPads of a variety of different types. So to give you the, an idea of the scale there. Some of these devices date to 2010 or before, especially the Windows devices, some of those are older, they do tend to last a little longer, in many cases, updatable for longer. All right. So this is, I think, really indicative of where we're headed as a district around devices for students. This chart shows device purchases in our district since 2016. So these are whole-year figures with the exception of 2019, which is through March 20th of this year. So what you can see there is when we break this down by desktops versus laptops versus tablets, and tablets are largely iPads, laptops are almost exclusively Windows devices, and desktops are almost exclusively Windows devices as well, you can see there's a pretty significant trend towards mobile, mobile devices. You can see that that blue, the blue pieces there, which represent desktops, very small percentage, whereas mobile is substantially more. These purchases are largely coming from our schools. We do not anymore have a district refresh program around technology, so the district is not directly providing devices to schools, except in very small, a small number of cases. These are purchases coming directly from schools. This is, this is the same data in a slightly different representation, and I think this is pretty powerful, a pretty powerful indication that the future is mobile. You can see laptops and tablets are very substantially the, the most of our purchases for technology. So the future is mobile, but I would also argue that the present is mobile. We are looking at a mobile world. And as I look around the room here, you're all mobile. So all the devices here are mobile. One of the biggest pieces of our digital learning strategy, and this is reflected in Board Policy 7200, is our focus on one-to-one. And just a reminder that one-to-one means the entire school, all students and teachers have a device for their own use 24/7, so they're issued a device. This is our pathway and our timeline towards one-to-one learning environments in our district, and this is in recognition that obviously, we can't do this across the entire district all at once, so this is our kind of pathway to that. The 2018-19 school year, Trainer Middle School was fortunate enough to receive a state grant, Nevada Area 21, to become our first true one-to-one school where students are issued a device. Next year, we will have five one-to-one schools. Three of those are our new schools, Sky Ranch, Desert Skies, and Poliquitas, which will begin, they will launch as one-to-one schools, which we're excited to, to be part of. Vaughn Middle School is going to, they have signaled an intention to be a one-to-one program where they actually issue the devices for take-home purposes as well. So we will have five one-to-one schools next year. The following year, and the decision has been made to, for our new schools to all be one-to-one, so we have two additional schools coming on, a middle school in the Arrow Creek area and Bo Hatch Elementary School, those will be one-to-one schools. And then we are developing a pathway for other schools to be one-to-one, which will be part of our district technology plan, and not to make excuses, but that is, some of the complexities around that are why we're spent, taking our time to develop this technology plan, to make sure that we get all of these pieces represented in a cohesive way. So this pathway is really focused around making sure that we have, we have a very strong equity lens on technology use in our district, and there's a number of different pieces in that, that we're looking to other districts for examples of how we can do that, how schools can actually be part of, of being a how schools can actually be part of being a one-to-one school.
Thank you. Robert, any, any, and this is, the answer to this is probably no, but any idea, what's the timeline for all of our schools to become one-to-one?
So, Robert Sidgford, for the record, so we don't have an established timeline for that. Unfortunately, especially in, you know, being sensitive to our current budget situation, we're not establishing a timeline beyond the schools that are starting one-to-one, that are obviously funded through capital money, and so we haven't established that. What we are finding is that many schools are close to a one-to-one ratio, and they've done that through a number of different means, often through grant money, and so what we want to make sure we can do is support those schools the best way possible to be one-to-one schools through the mechanisms they already have in place.
So this would require then, and the district, according to what you just said, as a district, we don't provide the computer technology?
That's correct.
Any more, that those are school-based decisions now? So, and then pathway to go one-to-ones, and would that include then the district being involved in that and maybe working with the school, or how do you envision maybe something like that?
So, yes, so that's what we're developing right now. We're looking at ways that we can support schools through potentially resources for support, through standardizing on, you know, standardizing on a common learning platform is a great way of doing that, to make sure that they have, they're able to create mechanisms at their school to support a one-to-one learning environment, students only having to log in through a limited number of tools, those kind of things that really provide the logistics around a one-to-one environment, making sure that our, to the best that we can, that our internal structures in, within IT, and I won't speak for academics, but within our district offices are able to support one-to-one environments. So the digital learning, the digital curriculum platform is a piece of that, so really trying to consolidate that is where we're headed with that.
Okay.
But to answer your question around schools, yes, the purchasing of technology is coming from our schools. They're the ones initiating the vast majority of our technology purchasing at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Vice President Raymond.
Thank you. Did you say earlier that in order to qualify as a one-to-one school, the device has to go home with the student?
For the record, Robert Sidgford, so our district definition, which is in Board Policy, is that a one-to-one program is where all students and all teachers have a device issued to them for their own use 24/7.
Because there, I know there are a number of schools where each student has a device on the school property, and in fact, I think Vaughn currently has that, but they're just changing to allow the device to go home in the future?
That's correct. That's what they've stated as their intention to do that, and one of the, not to get into too much detail, but one of the things that we see nationally and internationally, in fact, around one-to-one schools is some of the advantages with parental engagement, with the use of the tools, the ownership of the tools, is that when we see true one-to-one programs as opposed to a one-to-one ratio in schools, a lot of those things occur where they don't necessarily occur in just a one-to-one ratio school, because the students are not really having full ownership of the device. The point is to issue the device to the student so they have it when they need it, where they need it.
I'd just say, I think there could be a perception that we only have, you know, one school this year, five next year, that are one-to-one schools, when in reality, many of our schools provide students with a device on campus that, which to me, in a way, is one-to-one, as long as, you know, they have it at school too. I think, I see the difference, but I also see that we have a number of schools that are providing students with the opportunity to interact with a device on property throughout the day.
Yeah, and to comment on that briefly, one thing we see is, and when I talk about student ownership of the device, a lot of the time when we have a one-to-one ratio, they are in carts, they're controlled more by the teacher, and what we're really looking at in a one-to-one environment where technology is really truly integrated within teaching and learning so we can meet those standards, the student needs to be in control of that device, and so that's where some of the advantages of true one-to-one programs are, and that's, I think, a huge part of Vaughn's decision to actually move to that newer model.
I'll just add, if that's okay, and maybe this is for a future presentation, I'm curious what that looks like at the elementary school and with a kindergartner and a first grader.
Yeah, for the record, Robert Sidgford, so Poliquitas and Principal Don Angotti there, we've been obviously talking a substantial amount, I won't talk for him, however, the, so the model there is that the kindergartners and first graders will be receiving an iPad, second through fifth graders will be receiving a Windows laptop device.
Wow.
He is not looking at issuing the, you know, I don't think his intention is to bring a kindergartner in and say, here's your iPad, off you go. That's not the intent, so.
They would probably be fine with that, though.
They may very well be.
Yeah.
And, and that's an interesting point, because I think this will be a good laboratory for us to see what that might look like, but the intention certainly is not at this point to issue them the device for their own use, except for within the school. So they'll be issued within the school to them, so they get some of those advantages, but not that they're a take-home device, certainly at the outset.
And for many, many teachers in many of our schools, that's not a big lift. I was at Lemon Valley Elementary where, you know, we had first graders who are not only coding, but they're actually building the computer that they're coding on, and yeah, first graders who are having to learn what does a comma mean, are able to use commas appropriately in building a programming code for instructing a computer, so they're definitely, many of them, not all, but many of these kids are going to be very fluent at a very early age.
Yes.
I have a question, Madam President.
Yes, yes.
Just looking at this list of schools, is a district a little concerned about perception when all of the schools but two are brand-new? If you're in an older school, when you look at this, I mean, you might think, what about us? And what would we say to the community in that instance?
I would say that, for the record, Robert Sidgford, I would say that, you know, we're building schools in areas of need. We have the ability to do this right now. We have the ability to provide these, the students in those areas with this model of learning that we feel is very promising and very, very good for, to meet the needs of college and career readiness for the 21st century. I would point out that, you know, our school in Sun Valley, who's, you know, this community there is so excited to have a middle school there after so many years, and that, you know, I'm excited for those students to have this opportunity, you know, that they haven't had perhaps in the past, and so, you know, as we build schools in areas of need, you know, we have this opportunity. I would also say that I think it's important that we do create that pathway for other schools to do this, and these are, in many ways for us, laboratories of this, this way of learning, and so I do think that as we move forward, I think that schools will see a greater need for this, this way of interacting with our students and providing for their needs, and so that we will, I'm confident that as a district, we'll be having this conversation well into the future and addressing the concerns that you raise, because we share those concerns for sure. I would also say that Trainer, the Nevada Area 21 grant was focused on making sure that students in areas where needs might be greater were actually given a leg up in that grant, and so that's been really exciting to see those students, and then Vaughn Middle School as well, with some of the additional funding they've had, for exactly the reason that you talk about, that they've been able to be very intentional about doing that. So providing that pathway is a way of addressing some equity issues that we were very well aware of.
So, so by the end of school year 1920, two of the five schools listed there will be current existing schools, two of the five will be on one-to-one, and they are, they are schools that really deserve to have a leg up, so. It's, and it's a good point to raise, and thank you. Trustee Kelly.
Just maybe to clarify, so you almost look at this as a pilot, right? These, we're starting out with just, you know, Trainer this year, and next year, we're adding four new, four more schools, and so it's kind of a pilot, but if the funding becomes available and if there's a need based on the results from this initial group of schools, that quickly, a couple more years, you could see it just going district-wide, if that's what all the research shows is the best thing.
For the record, Robert Sidgford, I suppose I would, I would, I would think of this not so much as a pilot. We have a lot of models in the state nationally that this is a very effective way of preparing students for college and careers, and so this is more of an early implementation stage, I would say. You know, the hard work is around sustaining this work, as you mentioned, and I think that's a conversation we need to continue to have.
Okay, great.
Okay, moving along, so this, when we talk about devices, one of the things that comes up, and I know this has been a topic of discussion in our community and among board members in the past, is around the idea of, the concept of screen time, and I'd like to just kind of address this in a little detail, because we are very aware that students need to be using technology meaningfully, and that there are concerns around the amount of time that students and children are using technology. Obviously, we've, with especially mobile technology, with cell phones, smartphones, and internet-accessible devices being smaller, more accessible, we see, you know, we all see our kids, our grandkids, our, you know, kids in the community that are using screens a lot. And so we are very careful to distinguish between types of screen, types of device usage, and so we really are thoughtful around the difference between passive technology use and active technology use. So when we think of passive technology use, this is really where students or children in homes perhaps are simply consuming content, so when we think of watching TV, when we think of just viewing a YouTube video, when we think of those kinds of things, playing non-educational games, this is really kind of more passive technology use, that there's not really necessarily any active learning piece involved with that. We promote very strongly, and this, and our 21st Century Educator Badge Program has been promoting this for several years, we promote active technology use. So this is where students are actively engaged in using the technology for learning, for research, for collaborating with each other, for workflow with teachers, those kinds of things, and so they're developing the skills that they need, the digital skills, but also the collaboration skills and the creation skills, the processing, the verifying information, all of those things that you really can only do through practice, so making sure that we're really focusing on that and supporting our educators in using technology in our classrooms in that kind of way. So one of the ways that we support this, and I know this is a small, you know, the text on there is small, but just to kind of talk about some of the pieces there, this is guidance that we offer our teachers around the use of technology in classrooms, where we're really focusing on these active skills, so when, when students are creating products of learning, when they're creating things with technology, so you, President Holland, you mentioned the example of sway. That's a perfect example of students creating a sway to present a particular topic, to incorporate different pieces into that, so that's a way of learning, you know, all the way down to, you know, things like essay-writing skills, you know, can be enhanced by those kinds of tools. Sharing products of learning, so collaborating with others, sharing them digitally, utilizing visual learning, so visualizing concepts, using, you know, I use the example of a YouTube video being a passive learning mode, but when a student is actually actively seeking a YouTube video for a particular concept that they need to know to do something right now, that becomes active learning.
Or creating a YouTube video.
Or creating, yes.
Teach their fellow students something.
My twelve-year-old is very proud of her YouTube channel, yes. Managing the learning process, so some of these workflow pieces that are just natural to us, or perhaps maybe not so natural to some of us, but in the workplace, that this is how we work, and so being able to do that through technology, and then seeking feedback. You know, it's much easier to put something out there in a digital format and obtain feedback from that, from others, in, you know, depending on the value of that, depending on the purpose. So some of those, some of those ideas there are how we promote, is this idea of active use of technology rather than just screen time. So the American Academy of Pediatrics has actually altered their, in the last couple of years, altered their guidance around this, to recognize this kind of concept, where it's not so much how long students are using technology, it's what they're doing with it. And so we're very, very cognizant that that's, you know, we want students to be actively using technology. Okay, our final section here is really the sort of, some of this is behind-the-scenes stuff around supporting digital learning, and so this is around technology support services, a lot, there are some visible pieces to this around technology support, but there are many, many other things that are not visible, and I just wanted to go into that a little, a little bit to give you an idea of some of the pieces that need to be in place to support these things happening in our classrooms. So this is, just to provide some context, this, this is largely focused around the audit finding from 2016 that we've been requested to present to the board about, and that audit finding was that the district IT department isn't resourced comparatively to other districts with similar student populations, and so the board request was to identify what resources would be needed to put us on a par with other districts and to be able to support the, the teaching and learning through digital tools that we, that we need to support. And I'd just like to add that I know the timing on this is not necessarily the greatest, because you've just come out of a work session where we're talking about, you know, making some very, you know, impactful decisions on the district, and so we're definitely very sensitive to that. However, I think there's some information here that I think is important to share for consideration for the board. So sharing a chart, this comes directly from IT Audit Finding 1.1, which was that finding I just mentioned around comparative staffing. Just to give a brief overview of this, the audit actually compared seven different school districts, comparable school districts. They also included Clark County, which is comparable in some ways because it's in Nevada, but not in others, because it's substantially larger than us. And I'd just like to point out that this chart, if you look at the center red column, which is Clark County's IT budget at that point, and then compare that to Washoe County's budget, you can see that the bars are actually not sized correctly, with Clark County being forty-three million and Washoe County being four million, so just to keep that in mind. So to, to provide some context for the board, what we did is we actually used the same figures to create some charts that are much more visually accurate, and so this compares two different things. Firstly, IT staffing, and this is general fund staffing, just to, just to be, to be clear, the average of the comparable districts, and we excluded Clark County because of the size difference, but the other districts are all comparable, so the average of the comparable districts, seventy-one point two IT staff, Washoe County was at that point sixty-one staff, and then the IT budgets, comparable districts were an annual budget thirteen point four five million, Washoe County's budget four point zero five million. So you can see there's a substantial difference there, and that, that explains the audit This chart is a historical longitudinal chart comparing our devices in the district based on historical numbers and our IT staffing in FTEs. So you can see in 2010, we actually had eighty-four, I believe it was, IT staff, and were reduced to fifty, I think it was fifty-one at the time. That number stayed relatively static. There are two upticks in that, small upticks, one in 2012 and one in 2016. The 2012 uptick is for the business The 2012 uptick is for the Business Intelligence Analyst who created the Data Warehouse, BIG. So, that was what that, and those continue with us, and they, they do all of the IT work around that project. And then, the uptick in 2016 was the addition of our Information and Cyber Security Team, which was a, a team of three staff. So, those are the two significant upticks since 2010.
And Robert, I assume we have staff members at our sites, whether it's schools or other sites, that handle some things. I, I haven't read the audit from 2015, 2016, but do different districts approach their allocation of technology resources differently? In other words, they're more centralized in some places, more distributed in others?
For the record, Robert Sidgley, yes, that, that is true. We have a rather centralized approach to that, largely because of the, the lack of staffing. Many districts fund technical, technical support folks at each school. Many have, they might share a couple of schools. We have, and I'll actually present some numbers on this a little bit later, we have 14 field technicians to serve 109 sites. And I'll actually, actually have some figures on that later. But in terms of a tiered structure for that, yeah, that is definitely a struggle for us to provide the support that is needed in our schools. And as you can see from this chart, the number of devices since 2010 has increased over more than, almost fourfold, I think. So, and again, that's not just, that's, that's not a, it's not the only representation of it, but you can see that the number of devices in our district compared to the, the support available is, is a substantial difference there.
And so, there, some of the metrics I'm familiar with from Gartner and other places show devices per staff member, and then also show different software applications per IT staff member. And I know one of the strategies that Gartner and others recommend is to reduce the number of software applications that you're supporting, which is in line with your Microsoft versus Google. Are there other, are there other applications that we've looked at to try to reduce because it does create a huge support consequence for you all?
It does, and I actually do have some, some further information about that.
Okay, I couldn't find them, so.
No, totally understand. I do have some, some information about that later in the presentation. But on that issue, we, we pretty much, as a district, are pretty streamlined in what services we have. I mean, our, our, you know, financial system, Business Plus, our student information system are probably our two flagship programs that, obviously, we can't do without those. The majority of the rest of them are curriculum programs, some others that really serve specific needs. And so, I can't honestly say that we have areas of consolidation outside of some of these services, these online educational services that we've talked about.
Well, I hope that's something that will be addressed and looked at and evaluated regularly in the context of the strategic plan. Are there, are there services that we could consolidate with other entities that have to do the same thing, that we could, you know, save money on potentially? Just as a, as a function of the strategic plan to, to make sure that we aren't spending any more than we need to and can make available for, you know, improving the things that we're deficient in by reallocating some of those resources and doing some of those out-of-the-box things. So, I hope that'll be part of your strategic plan thought.
Yeah, we can certainly look at that. I will say that, you know, our student information system, Infinite Campus, is a state system that we're mandated to use. You know, Business Plus, when we talk about things like changing an enterprise system like that, it has a tremendous impact on the system.
Oh, I know, I've been through it.
And I'm not, certainly not pushing back.
I know, I've been through it. And, and sometimes you have to, you know, rip the Band-Aid off for a long-term benefit, so, just saying.
Yes, and, and that's certainly taken on board, I appreciate that. All right, so, moving on, and this is the other example I had of a really terrible PowerPoint slide, how not to do it. But I did want to represent in a single slide, sort of, some of the really high-level programs that we run within IT. So, if you look at a couple of those that you can't really actually read, but I will tell you what they are, just to take the very first one in our Network Services Department on the top left, you know, that, that is, that, that includes, that, that's our physical infrastructure and cabling. That includes all of our network drops, all of our cabling across 109 sites. So, imagine all of the CAT 6, CAT 5 cables within our walls, behind the walls, every network drop that you see in every building. That's that one program that we support across the district. So, it gives you a kind of an indication of the size of our network that we are supporting with the staff that we have. This is a collection or a selection of statistics on the, just to give you an indication of the size of our network. A couple to point out there in particular, I already mentioned over 92,000 user accounts, with the exception of some disabled user accounts for, you know, we obviously need to keep those active or keep them disabled, but keep the data for several years beyond the time that a, maybe an employee leaves. But most of those are, the vast majority are active user accounts, so there's a person using that account, so we're supporting those. 4,400 wireless access points, 2,200 switches and routers, including in our schools, 228 monthly cybersecurity events. So, we added our IT security team in 2016. These are actionable, active cybersecurity events. This is not, you know, some of the, 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 this is not every spam email.
13.
Exactly. These are actionable cybersecurity events. And if you break that down, I think it's one every eight minutes or something like that for, for our district, for actionable events.
And just for the record, when you say an actionable event, it's something is detected and you block it?
Correct, it might be.
We haven't had a breach of our system.
That's correct.
Ever.
That's, so far as we know, that is correct, yes.
And you constantly monitor the dark web to see if any student information or any staff information is out there?
That is correct.
And you have, as you and I have discussed in the past, and Joe and others, you have not ever found any student or staff information on the dark web?
That is, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make that on the record for folks.
Yeah, so that, so that item can include phishing scams, can include malware attacks, a variety of different things there, yep. But each, each one of those requires some kind of response and mitigation for. Oh, just a couple of others, 68 million daily internet transactions across our district. We hum along at about seven gigabits per second of data going through our district. You know, it's, it's just, I mean, it really is a phenomenally large network. Another indication, and this is a more user-focused indication, the number of emails we deal with on a daily basis. 400, it's 400 and, I forget the number, 357,000 emails through our district on a daily basis. And this is also indicative of the work for us. 115,000 of those are what we think of as bad emails. So, that means that they're spam, they're something that they shouldn't be reaching our users. So, that means that we have to do something about that, filtering those out, making sure that our spam policies are, are in place, all those kind of things. And one final indication, sort of representation of the increasing demand for our IT services, this is just a selection of programs, initiatives that we've been involved with over the past several years, and I'll just go through these briefly. So, any guesses on when the first iPad was launched? No? 2010, it seems. 2010. So, we always think of, you know, these things come in and we think they've been around longer, but 2010 is the first iPad, and that really launched mobile as a key, a, a real force, not just in education, but in, in, in our society. So, at that, from that point on, we've been dealing with not just the typical corporate IT desktop environment, we've been dealing with the mobile environment, which requires an entirely different set of management of those tools, obviously because they're moving around. So, wireless becomes a big issue, those kinds of things. BIG is our Business Intelligence Gateway, that is the Data Warehouse, that was launched, I believe, 2012. And that's an ongoing project, of course, that's not going away. One-to-one wireless, there was a capital project, I believe, in 2014, I think 2013, 14, that was, that created a one-to-one level of wireless at all of our sites. So, that is something that obviously we're looking to sustain as well. Cloud services, so, we've obviously managed a number of efficiencies in cloud services through the years, but really going into that in earnest in 2015, 16, through today. So, that's our Office 365 environment and a variety of other data storage and all those kind of pieces as well. IT security, 2016 began, so that is an ongoing project. Our one-to-one schools are launching, we're doing work around digital tools. The, the point being that the demand for IT services is, is increasing and these projects don't go away, they just continue and require additional support. So, with the staffing that we, that we have, it's definitely puts a lot of pressures on our, on our office of IT to make sure we're meeting the needs. So, launching into the final piece of this presentation and to answer the question asked by the board around resource gaps and IT staffing, four main gaps that we've identified as things that we're really, we struggle to keep up with as an IT, an office of IT. The first of these is risk mitigation specifically around IT security. So, we introduced an IT security team in 2016, and that's been a fantastic addition to our district, to our security stature. And the reality is that making sure that we're monitoring actively, that we're securing our network to the extent of our ability is a really good addition. What it does, in addition, is put pressures on our operational side because we have security monitoring and scanning, and if you look around that, the circle there, we monitor, we find things, we analyze, we analyze the risk, and we develop mitigation strategies. But then, we have to implement things to actually address those. And that's where, we have not added operational staff to do that, we've added the security team, but the operational staff is virtually the same as it has been for a number of years. And so, that's where we, that's where kind of the bottleneck is there. Another issue, and this is an increasing issue, is web applications. This is around, this could, these could be curriculum applications, these could be, we're introducing a mobile app for our communications department. We've, we have a document management system that's cloud-based, you know, a lot of desire for single sign-on so that students can access resources more efficiently, a lot more databases being developed, our teams and digital curriculum pieces, all of these things require a lot of work around managing web applications. So, development of that, working with vendors, tracking and monitoring those things, the training, making sure that authentication is working appropriately, all of those pieces, data privacy. So, there's, we really don't have the resources really necessary to, to manage that process and continue to, to respond to the needs of the district in that way. A third resource gap is around infrastructure, and this is obviously all of the things kind of really mostly behind-the-scenes, things that you don't see in IT. So, our servers, routers, switches, wireless, controllers, access points, you know, even our closed caption TVs, battery backup, all of those kind of things. And on current funding levels, we're, we've calculated that at currently a 36.5-year refresh cycle. So, what that means is.
For technology, yeah.
What that means is we will install something for you and we'll see you in 35 and a half years, 36 and a half years.
We're not, we're not really doing that, folks.
Right.
We're limping along.
That's correct, yes. But, but that is based on current funding. Where the industry standard is obviously three to five years. So, what we've done is we've developed a plan to, to get us onto an eight-year refresh cycle, and that's something that we've been really fortunate to work with our Capital Projects Department and our Business Finance Office to develop that plan. And the, the intention is to, to use, to hopefully use capital funding to.
Great.
To put us on an eight-year refresh cycle.
That's gonna be our next question, because that, that can be a capital expense, yeah.
And this is actually getting back to the, this is the last, last point here around the resource gap, and that is our, some of the ratios that actually President Simon Holland, you were referencing. These are our current ratios of technician-to-device support and technician-to-user support. So, what this means is for every, every user, for, for every technician, they are supporting 4,593 devices and 6,628 users. So, that, it, there are a variety of different metrics around that from different organizations, and they range, there's a wide range of different measures for this. So, it's really, it's difficult to put an actual number on here would be the, the ideal number for a school district.
Industry standard, yeah.
But in, many industries have a recommendation of 1 to 50 for users or devices. That's obviously not attainable or even recommended for us. But there are others that go 1 to 350, 1 to 500. I've rarely seen anything above 1 to 1,000, although those are out there as recommendations. So, it's difficult to put that number on it. But the other thing that, that we, that is a subset of this technical support and training piece, resource gap is around one-to-one schools. And so, as we introduce one-to-one schools, we have the technicians in the schools, so each of our new one-to-one schools has a technician assigned to it. But in terms of escalating support around one-to-one programs, we don't have internally that capacity to really deal with the increased support there.
I think it's, I think it's, I know you're concerned that we're, we're having this discussion late in the budget cycle because there's not a prayer that we'll be able to significantly address this, this budget season. But I think it's really important for the public to understand that this is the situation we're in across the board in the district. This is the situation we're in with regard to technology. This is the situation we are in with regard to counselors. This is the situation we are in with regard to classroom sizes. This is not unique to technology, and we are, and I applaud the staff for their incredible dedication and commitment to doing the best that we can within these resources. But again, this is not isolated. This is what it looks like whether we're talking about custodians or bus drivers or teachers or aides or textbooks or whatever the subject, it is counselors, social workers, this is across the board, the situation we find ourselves in. And I, I appreciate the great work of the staff that, and I know I speak for all of us here, we appreciate the dedication, the commitment in the face of challenges like this. Technician-to-device ratio of 1 to 4,593. That's, that's what we live with here. So, thank you for, for all of the hard work that your team and everyone else here does to make it work for our students. Yeah, so, that's your last, did you have any closing comments before we?
No, I think that you probably said it well, I appreciate that. We appreciate the opportunity to present. I know that was a long presentation to meet the variety of requests, so I appreciate the time.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we have some public comment, and again, to members of the audience who are here, we appreciate your patience in listening to this long presentation, but it's, it responds to several board and community member requests for information to be discussed. So, thank you for your patience. Yeah, JJ?
John Appolito.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
Yes, ma'am, John Appolito, Protect Nevada Children. My son asked me about 40 times during that presentation if we could go. I think a lot of what I heard in that presentation, I agree with, especially the teacher-to-teacher sharing aspects of the lessons. We also, at Protect Nevada Children, we do believe that they should be learning technology, including the Microsoft products and coding. But there's some things that I, that I, I don't understand, but I wanted to comment on a couple of things. FERPA, FERPA was gutted under two presidents, George W. Bush and Barack Obama. Personally identifiable information can now be shared with almost anyone who asks without parental consent. And I know we are in compliance with FERPA, but that doesn't. And I know we are in compliance with FERPA, but that doesn't protect kids anymore. COPA, this study from Cal Berkeley this summer shows that many of the vendors that are used are not in compliance with COPA. So we're also in compliance with COPA, but the products that we're using are not in compliance with, with the law, so I don't know. Both Bill Gates and Steve Jobs raised their kids largely tech-free. There's a reason for that. Today, many of the Silicon Valley executives who profit from these products that we're using in our schools send their kids to private schools that severely limit technology use until high school. I'm glad my eighth graders, I have eighth grade twins, are gonna miss the worst, in my mind, the worst of this. Most of the research that I've seen shows increasing student technology use in the classroom, especially in the lower grades, will not improve student performance. In fact, there's a lot of research that shows increased use of technology will diminish student performance. One of the things that came up yesterday in Carson City, when the presenter was talking about these one-to-one schools, will there be schools where kids can go that are tech-free? I think what you'd find is a lot of us would much, are more like Bill Gates and Steve Jobs, we understand that this, this stuff is not that good. Frankly, as an educator, as a former teacher, I don't know, we're racing to what? I don't know. My oldest, oh, forget about that. I agree with the presenter also that the more digital learning tools, the more chance of data breaches and security issues. Edmodo, that's the company that's now, that the district uses that's now in the hands of the Chinese. Why does the district refuse to tell parents that that company is now owned by the Chinese? I believe the district still sanctions the use of Edmodo. And on these one-to-one devices, when they come, the Chromebooks come with a sync feature enabled so that the people at Google can see everything the kid does on the device. I don't know if the PCs come the same way or not. I have a couple more questions, but I'll email them. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
That's all for this item.
Robert, do you want to respond to anything? I don't know if you heard all of it, but I just wanted to give you the opportunity if you wanted to respond.
For the record, Robert Sitford, Chief Information and Innovation Officer. We do not sanction the use of Edmodo in our school district, and actually it will not be approved as, for use with the beginning of this process that we're implementing for next year. It is a learning management system that we no longer have need of in our district. In the past, some of our educators had used that tool and because it was one tool that was available at the time, and that is, that will no longer be the case. Additionally, in working with Edmodo, after their data breach, a couple of points, one is that there, the breaches that occurred were, did not actually provide information on the dark web that was usable to access any accounts. It was hashed and salted information that could not be, there's virtually no chance that that could be used to access any student data, and so I'd just like to put that on the record as well.
Okay, thank you. So again, Edmodo will not be an authorized vendor in Washoe County School District for the 1920 school year. So thank you, that was new information for me, so appreciate that, thank you, Robert. Okay, no other public comment on that? I would, I know Lindsay, you're here, but I would like to go to the discussion of the school naming, because I think, how many people are here on the school naming? Yeah, let's do that, thank you. And thank you so much for your patience, I really appreciate it. I'd rather not, let's just, if trustees need to take a break, why don't you go ahead and do that, but let's keep going just because there's so many people who have been waiting so long. So thank you very much, Irene and Riley, for being here, and we'll, this is item 4.02, which is presentation, discussion, and possible action to select the official name of the new middle school in South Reno from among the following, as recommended by the school naming committee, Marcy Hers and Carlson or Arrow Creek. So welcome, Ms. Payne and Mr. Sutton. So-
You have the floor.
Thank you, good afternoon, President Simon Holland, Superintendent Davis, Board of Trustees. For the record, Irene Payne, Chief Communications and Engagement Officer for the school district, and I'm joined by?
Riley Sutton.
And, I could have said that, couldn't I? And it goes without saying how excited we are to be in front of you talking about naming our new middle school in the Arrow Creek region. Before Riley and I get started, we both want to thank the school naming committee members for all their hard work, and in particular Elizabeth Janassi, who serves as the chair and wanted to be here this evening or this afternoon and actually couldn't, but we really do appreciate their dedication and their work. So how does it work when we start to think about naming a school? Well, the community certainly get involved and they suggest names, and then the committee picks finalists over two meetings, and then we come in front of you, our trustees, to pick the final name. For this process, we started back in November last year when we started soliciting names. And when I say we started soliciting names, this is a huge push that Riley and Megan and the communications department do, and it's everything from video. In fact, we actually launched the video with a live video with President Simon Holland. We post on social media, on the website, we obviously involve the media, traditional media, we do outreach to our Spanish partners, and the point of it all is to engage our community and every voice that we can in our community. So we get all the submissions, and in February of this year, the committee did some hard work and reduced the, the list to 18 semifinalists, including, if you remember, the previous finalists which roll over. And then just a couple of weeks back or a month back, the committee actually narrowed that list to three finalists.
Riley Sutton for the record, just a couple quick fun bits of information for you on what came through, and that was 35 unique submissions from the community for this school, 69 total submissions, there were a lot of duplicates, as there often are, of various place and or people names, and then between when the community-
I just have to add, one of the people names was our illustrious Chief of School Police, Mr. Jason Trevino.
Unfortunately for Chief Trevino, board policy says that no current school district employee or board member can be considered, so he was one of the ones that unfortunately, along with Daenerys Targaryen, got cut off as a viable submission, so you have that in common.
If your scalp is blushing. And he wasn't prepared to resign, so what could we do?
[laughing] That's fine. 69 total submissions, between when the community submits the names, then the school naming committee narrows it down to the semifinalists, and then before the finalists are picked from that pool, we put all of those names out to the community for just a rank order, what do you like, first, second, third, fourth, and we had 177 people submit those online rankings. And then without further ado, your finalists, as recommended by the school naming committee for this school, are Marcy Hers and Carlson and Arrow Creek. Unless otherwise instructed, I'm gonna skip reading through or describing what's there since you have it in your packets, and go right on to the final slide here, which is just the ranking from the school naming committee, they're ranked in the order of the votes received, the total points received from the school naming committee, to put these three forward, so as you can see, Marcy Hers with a total of 18 points, and then Ann Carlson and Arrow Creek tied with four points each as their triumvirate recommendation to the board. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but otherwise concludes my presentation.
Okay, do we have any questions before we hear public comment? Okay, and I think on behalf of the board, we also wish to thank the committee volunteers who have been very diligent in working on the school naming process, and I'd also like to thank all of the folks who participated by submitting potential names for the school. We really value that community input, and it's an exciting thing to be able to do, so thank you to the committee and thank you to the, thank you to the public. Let's go to public comment.
Kathy Brewer Rivera.
Welcome, Ms. Rivera, you have three minutes. Thanks.
Hello, Madam President, board members of the Washoe County School Naming Committee. My name is Kathy Brewer, and I have been a friend and personal trainer for Ann Carlson for 12 years. During this time, I have developed a great relationship with her and learned of her many outstanding attributes, some of which are working with children and her association with the University of Nevada. I've had the opportunity to read a number of endorsements for Ann and to be considered in the naming of the school, and if I may share one with you, this letter is from Gretchen Alt-Sawyer, and she's the Development Director of the Trekkie Meadows Community College. She says, "Dear School Naming Committee, I am writing to recommend that you name the new Arrow Creek Middle School after a true education advocate and distinguished citizen, Ann Jones Carlson. I have known Ann since 2001, when I began my tenure as Development Director of the University of Nevada Reno College of Education. I worked closely with the Friends of the College of Education Advisory Board, of which Ann is a founding member. I've had the opportunity to spend time with her as a member of the board and learn a lot about her significant contributions and long-term involvement with education. She's a graduate of the University of Nevada with a bachelor's in business and a master's in education administration. She has a great reputation as an elementary school teacher in the district where she taught at Roger Corbett Elementary for 34 years. In fact, Ann is so highly regarded for her commitment to education that she received the University of Nevada Reno College of Education Distinguished Alumni Award in 2016. She also received the Chamber of Commerce Teacher of the Month Award and Nevada Women's Fund Achievement Award. In the 18 years that I have known Ann, I have engaged with her on an advisory board and as a donor to education. Ann and her family are generous financial supporters of education. I've experienced this generosity at both the university and at Trekkie Meadows Community College, where I am now the Executive Director of the foundation. She established a scholarship at the university for students participating in a vital time of their teaching experience during their teaching semester. At TMCC, Ann has been a generous supporter of programs and equipment needs at the William Pennington Applied Technology Center, a vital training area that is providing training for students for jobs that are now available in our expanding economy. As you consider the name for the new middle school, I encourage you to give Ann Jones Carlson thoughtful consideration. She has not only been an exemplary educator who has positively impacted thousands of students, but she is also a tireless advocate for education and a generous philanthropist." Back to my words, "Ann's community service continues today with her involvement on several boards and scholarship committees that benefit the university. I ask you to consider Ann's legacy." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you so much for coming down.
Ann Carlson.
Ms. Carlson, welcome, nice to have you here.
Obviously I'm Ann Carlson. And I was a Reno native, product of the Reno School, Reno School District, not Washoe County School District, they changed after I graduated from high school. And I, during my time, I said I expected to be some little bit further, but during the years, after graduate, while I was in high school, I taught on the junior ski program as a sophomore, sophomore in high school for the next 50 years, nearly 50 years. So it was during that time that I was advised, said that you would make a good teacher. So former high school teachers that I had encouraged me to go back to school and get my education degree after my business degree, which I did, and was hired to teach at Roger Corbett, when it was a rather new school, had only two wings, opening one new wing that year in 1960. I continued there for my, for the next 34 years, but during that time, many things happened. I helped organize the original library, which had a lot of books that came, dropped in our lap in a room, small little room, from Southside School, which was the elementary school in the southeast part of Reno, that houses now the Discovery Museum, that's where it was located. But while teaching in Corbett, I got involved in many district committees, taught in-service classes to teachers, even going to Encoine. I started working with, on the different committees, I did the reading adoption and the math adoption committees, and these, after we selected ones, then for the next year, we would take care of them, pilot them in the class, in classrooms, I did that. Then I just worked on other district, building, architectural selection committee, then the design, and from there, it is actually kind of history. I retired, after I retired, then I stayed in education at the other levels. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your service to our children, Ms. Carlson. That's been a wonderful career.
Right, saw many kids, in fact, the other day, I just had, one came up to me and said, "Hi, I remember you in second grade."
Oh, great, that's great.
It's always, it's always fun to see former students.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Scott Turek.
Mr. Turek, welcome.
Good afternoon, everybody. For the record, my name is Scott Turek, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in front of you today. It is not often that you get to know someone that has accomplished so much in their life. I am blessed to have known Ann Carlson for over 30 years. She has always been so positive, inspiring to be around, and that's why I strongly endorse her for a school naming opportunity. I'd also like to thank you for creating the criteria for having established, for selecting a candidate for the honor of the name representing a new school in Washoe County. Although Ann Carlson meets all of the six criteria, two, the enroll, education, and the contributions are where Ann has spent her adult life committed to. Ann spent 34 years as a teacher in the classroom, and although she had the opportunity to move up and go into more administrative roles within the school district, she chose to stay in the schools and really use her skills as a mentor and educator to help educate the children to the best of her ability. So living in this community, growing up skiing, I think we had a ski day today, I'm not sure if it was another beautiful spring day in the Trekkie Meadows, but we were getting quite a bit of snow in the afternoon. But I, you know, was one of those ones that went up to the junior ski program, and I was amazed at how dedicated Ann was to the young skiers who drove up to those, in those wonderful yellow school buses that we drove up in, and I don't know how we got back off the mountain into the school buses, because there were so many of them, but we all figured out how to, how to get back home. But for the record, she spent over 50 years working the junior ski program. Her heart was with those children in her classroom, but right after that, it was the kids and the programs of the Sky Tavern Junior Ski Program. It was amazing amount of work she did, and she just had so much dedication to that. As a faculty member at the University of Nevada, I saw firsthand how involved Ann was on the entire campus. She was a university trustee for over 14 years, and on the executive committee from 2008 through 2009. When I talked with other members of the university, I received amazing response to how Ann had impacted our community and the education system from the elementary school level all the way through the- all the way through the halls of higher education. I'd like to read a letter that the president of the university, Dr. Mark Johnson, wrote about Ann with respect to naming a school after her. "I am honored to endorse the naming of a new area school in the honor of Ann Carlson as a fitting tribute to the remarkable citizen whom educating and mentoring local students had been her life's work. A native Reno resident graduated from UNR in 1959 and began her teaching career at Roger Corbett Elementary School, where she taught for 34 years. She received her master's degree and..." I was looking up at the clock, and we have five seconds. "...during her teaching career, Ann taught in-service classes, served on various district committees, and there's a lot to talk about, but we're more than happy to see her name in this election process. Thank you very much."
Thank you so much, Mr. Turek.
Ron Turek.
The younger brother, aren't you? The younger brother, yes. Welcome, Mr. Turek.
And thank you for the time, too. First, Madam President and group, thank you very much for letting me be here. And I've been a friend in physical, my, excuse me, let's see, I'll get it straight here. Needless to say, I've known the Jones family, father, mother, Martin Clarence, for over 35 years, and have been a member of the junior ski program, too, for about 30 years, too. But needless to say, with Ann, you might recognize some of the things that I'm going to talk about, because it's from our good friend, John Carthers. And it's basically, he says, and this was directed to the school board a year ago, two years ago, when there was another group here, and it says, "It's my honor to support the proposed naming of an area school after Ann Jones Carlson, a leader and supporter of education throughout a community and a champion of education programs and students at the university. I've known Ann since I came to the university in 2003, but her involvement with the institution goes back much further. Ann received her bachelor's degree from the university '59 and earned her master's in '78. She served as a trustee for the university and Nevada Reno Foundation for more than a decade, excuse me, and continues to serve as chief, as chair of the foundation's ad hoc scholarship committee. Ann has received numerous awards in recognition of her service and commitment to the university, including the Nevada Alumni Association's University Service Award in '99 and the College of Education Distinguished Alumni Award. In addition to supporting the university through the Clarence and Martha Jones Foundation, Ann's personal philanthropy has made an indelible impact on our institution, particularly the college of education. In 2005, Ann created and has continued to add to a scholarship for education of students participating in their teaching semester, focusing on those at-risk schools. She's a founding member of the Friends of the College of Education. She has created new opportunities for underserved students through her gifts and programs like the Dean's Future Scholar and Outreach Program targeting low-income first-generation students. She is one of the leadership supporters of the William Pennington Student Achievement Center, created so that students could have convenient access to the resources that help them make the most of their education. For decades, Ann has devoted her time and resources to bettering teaching, teacher education in Nevada, and her leadership continues to inspire others to become involved in the cause. Her philanthropy and service have not been limited to the college education. It would be an honor for her to be there, and a lot of people talk about her philanthropy, but the Clarence and Martha Jones assets came from, there was no inheritance at all. It was all from hard work in the family, and we're aware of how they did it. And so, we appreciate your consideration. She's out of one thing, you know, job she's done, you know, for the children in this area and the school system. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turek.
Thank you.
Bill Henderson.
Welcome, Mr. Henderson.
Thank you very much. I'm Bill Henderson. I'm the Executive Director and General Manager of Sky Tavern. So, first off, I've got to thank everybody that's been a volunteer up there since 1948. Here to talk about Marcy Hers, and also, I'd like to thank Washoe County for being a partner with Sky Tavern since as long as anyone can remember with transportation. Yesterday, I was at AACT and in a presentation where some kids built some ski racks for us, so it all works. When we got into this thing about building or trying to get a school name for Marcy Hers, we didn't really know what we were doing. So, we, of course, did it over the top. We gave away t-shirts, built a movie, posters, banners, talked to everyone. And we started doing a lot of outreach to talk to the general public about Marcy Hers, and we told them all the story, you know, and you've heard it, the 1948 Junior Ski Program, 100,000 kids taught over the years. You know, the Sky Tavern is probably the oldest and largest volunteer ski program in the country, and more than likely the world, that she created an environment where teaching by volunteers was the core value, that parents were passing on skills and abilities to kids, that we create teachers. My son is the next one. So, it's just an amazing, amazing story. And we thought it was, but what we found out was, all the parents thought it was also. So, they liked what was, there was a lot of support, and her message of physical literacy being one of the four building blocks of kids, because she was a teacher, you know, math, music, reading, writing, but she really believed that getting kids outside was equally important. So, I'd urge you to name this school after her, so that we can have a partnership with the school, and maybe balance out those digital days just a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson, and thanks for the work you do for the children of Washoe County.
Kim Willbanks.
Ms. Willbanks, thank you. Thanks for your patience. I know you've been catching up on your reading over there.
Oh, I have.
We want to know, is it something we should read?
It's a good one, it's a good one. I had no idea that there was even an option to speak. I just came because I'm very proud to say that Marcy Hers is my aunt. So, I'm very interested in this, and I would strongly encourage you to consider her name quite seriously. A remarkable, remarkable woman. Much of what she did, she did before I was even born. So, I remember her a bit as a child, and just a beautiful person, such a generous, energetic, positive person who should be an inspiration to young women forever. As you know, I read what you had up there, you know what an amazing Olympic-level athlete she was. Perhaps you didn't realize that she was dabbling with aviation and learning to fly decades before most women would even consider such a thing. She is a pioneer, a remarkable woman, and go Marcy, go Aunt Marcy.
All right, thank you, and thanks for your patience today.
Chris Bender.
Mr. Bender, welcome.
Thanks for the time. My name is Chris Bender. I'm the current chairman of the Junior Ski Program. I'm here to support the process of the naming of a school after Marcy Hers, and this all happened before me, obviously, and why this is so important. Marcy grew up with her son Howard, and I grew up with Marcy and her son Howard in the late 50s, so I've got a personal reference back to Marcy. She was a schoolteacher at Mount Rose Elementary and founded the Fenway Preschool. Marcy believed that sports were good for children, as it helped them to expand learning opportunities and have a sport to focus energies on. She herself held the U.S. record for the 400-meter dash and a world record also. In 1948, she started the Junior Ski Program. It is now the oldest, largest volunteer-based ski program in the United States, and as Bill said, over 100,000 kids have been taught to ski or snowboard there. We have scholarships to ensure income level is not a barrier. We have an adaptive program for special needs for both youth and adults, an amazing under-6 program, and this is the real interesting one, over 20,000 hours of volunteer time were invested last year in the program. The program is supported by more than 50 local businesses, 24 philanthropists, and five foundations. The true value of the program, however, that Marcy created, is family. Her vision of an all-volunteer program reflects the ideals as an educator and a sportswoman. Parents volunteering for the program teach their children the value of volunteering. I can directly attest to the value of this lesson as for both parents and children. I see it every winter where the kids are taught both skiing and observing their parents doing something for others, as opposed to mom and dad just going off to work. Marcy was a civic leader and was recognized by national and local organizations. Her ideals, tenacity, and skills as an educator led her to provide the youth of this community with an opportunity to participate in winter snow sports. There are not many that can say they created a program that lasted 70 years and affected more than 100,000 children. The naming of a school for Marcy Hers based on all of that she stood for is a way to show the overall community how important and lasting these values are, caring for others no matter what their condition is, volunteering precious time, not just money, teaching their children the basic value of participation. The Junior Ski Program is very hopeful that we can forge a relationship with the new school and can develop events both during the summer and winter, so that these students will benefit from an additional outdoor experience, and it's just not a name on the door. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Lori Beck.
Ms. Beck, welcome.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to be here. I am currently a faculty emerita from the University of Nevada and am volunteering with the University of Nevada Ski Team as both a member of their booster, or director, one of the directors of their booster group, as well as the current president of the Nevada Ski Team Alumni Group with the Nevada, University of Nevada Alumni Association. And I am here to say that both the current booster group and the current team, as well as the hundreds of alumni, are also want to express their opinion that Marcy Hers is the name for this school. It is physically located in a situation where the mountain looks down upon it, and this opportunity, we believe, is the best way to go. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here.
Pablo Nava Duran.
Mr. Duran, nice to see you again. Welcome back.
Thank you. John Maron not here, he retired.
He did.
Yeah, we got Andrew Colati, the assistant event director for the football program. Glad to see you. So, I know, like, a little bit of competition about zoning media, Arrow Creek Middle School, about Hope Haker, but this is a school naming. Okay, so, here we go. So, I believe Ann Carlson should be on the new middle school, Arrow Creek, because he helped the low-income neighborhood turn into becoming successful in school and to her life. And make, was, you know, my neighbor was on for Washoe Corbett, and Ann Carlson was there. And I know, unfortunately, so, yes, no one talked about it. So, I believe Ann Carlson should be a new middle school, Arrow Creek, and I really appreciate the power of her. I got nothing to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming down.
Jim Barkley.
Mr. Barkley, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Jim Barkley. Few brief comments. First, I would like to express my appreciation for the hard work of the School Naming Committee. I attended both of the name selection meetings, and I was impressed by the level of attention and consideration they gave this process, and I really think their effort should be commended. I'm also gratified that the committee voted unanimously in favor of Marcy Hers as the name for the new middle school. If all goes to plan, assuming you can get out of elementary school, my younger son will be attending the school when it opens in 2020. I commented at the last meeting about the impact Marcy had on me personally, and the impact that she's had on kids in Washoe County for the last 70 years through the Junior Ski Program. Today, I would just like to add to that, in addition to the historical significance of the name Marcy Hers, I think the name will also serve as a reminder going forward of the important connection between athletics and education. I think it will send a message to students that athletics and outdoor recreation can be a very important part of their educational development. Marcy was an educator who saw the value of getting her kids involved in physical activity, and I think it's important to maintain and perpetuate that connection, that link between sports and education. And I think naming the school after Marcy will help advance that goal. So, I would ask the board to ratify the clear choice of the naming committee and select Marcy Hers as the name for the new middle school. As to the other candidates, Ann Carlson obviously had a very exceptional career as an elementary school teacher here in Washoe County, with, I think, there are six or seven new elementary schools in the pipeline. I think her name would be an excellent choice for one of those schools. As for Arrow Creek, I really don't think that there's any historic or geographic significance to that name. It's really more of a corporate brand name for a gated community in a country club, and the development itself will make up a pretty small portion of the proposed zone. I think for maybe the same reason that Montreux would make a good name for a middle school, I don't think Arrow Creek's an appropriate name. So, again, I would ask that the committee, or the board, defer to the clear choice of the naming committee and select Marcy Hers as the name for the new middle school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barkley.
Gabe Hers.
Well, that's a familiar last name. Welcome.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Gabe Hers, and I'm honored to be here and to have my grandmother considered in the naming of this new middle school. Unfortunately, I never had the opportunity to meet Marcy Hers in person, but interestingly, I feel like I have met her, and that has been through the numerous stories that people have shared in the way that she has touched their lives, through her passion and dedication and just drive. And I'm sure you've heard those stories ad nauseam, so I'd just like to express my excitement for her legacy to continue through the naming of this school. And I'm even more excited about the potential for her to be a source of inspiration for future generations to come, to live their lives passionately as she did. I think we could use more Marcy Herses out there. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Alicia Arazis.
I'm sorry.
Welcome, Alicia.
Thank you very much. Can everybody hear me okay? Perfect. Thank you for having me.
Would you pronounce your last name for us?
Arith, Alicia Arith.
Oh, right.
It's a catchy one. I'm very honored to say that I am a relative of Marcy Herses. She was my grandmother and is always going to be far cooler than I will ever be. Before Marcy Hers was an elementary school teacher. In northern Nevada, she was an all-state athlete. That is why at Mount Rose Elementary in 1946, she created and supervised baseball, basketball, and volleyball programs. She combined her love of sports with her love of teaching. She may have left the school system, but she never left teaching. She took her love of teaching out to the classroom and onto the ski hill, where in 1948, she founded the Junior Ski Program. She believed that skiing would keep kids active in the winter, kids are not meant to hibernate, and she literally did all she could do to get kids to Sky Tavern. May or may not have gotten into a fight with a few bus drivers, but she made it happen. She had an old, witty station wagon that she filled with young kids every weekend, taking them skiing. Before too long, she recruited more parents to bring their kids up skiing. That tradition continues today with parents volunteering and school buses bringing kids to the hill. Sky Tavern and Washoe County Schools have a long tradition of working together. In fact, former Washoe County School Board Member Dave Iasi was the first president of the Sky Tavern Board when it became its own nonprofit. For 70 years, Marcy's program has been available to kids of Washoe County and kids of all abilities. Over 100,000 children have learned to ski, and not to mention the parents that try to learn. Kids like Lane Spina, two-time Olympic medalist, and David Wise, two-time Olympic gold medalist. Kids like Candace Cable, Dave Conklin, Dave Kylie, and Richie Kilgore, who all competed in the Paralympics, not to mention Connor Fogel, who started at Sky Tavern when he was nine years old. He's now 25, and he hasn't missed his ski season since. Speaking of accomplished athletes, I Speaking of accomplished athletes, I would like to take just a few brief moments to read a testimonial for the record from Alexandra Wise. Dear School Board, my name is Alexandra Wise. I am the wife of David Wise, two-time Olympic champion in half-pipe skiing. I am also a mother of two kind and gentle children, Nayeli and Malachi, age seven and four. We are a skiing family who have grown up locally here in Reno. My husband and I both learned how to ski at Sky Tavern at a very young age, with our parents who continued to pour into our passions and love for the sports as we advanced. As parents ourselves now, we see the incredible value of both skiing and academics for our own children. My husband and I met at RCF just down the street, where our parents attended weekly service. Much of our family history has began right here in the South Reno area, where you were choosing to build a new middle school. As a woman who has grown up in this area and built her own life here, I cannot fathom a more worthy name for this school. I wonder how many young girls who walk through these doors will feel the courage and strength from Marcy as they pursue their own passions in textbooks and outside on the playground, looking up at the beautiful future they have ahead of them. Would you please consider Marcy Hers as the new school name? Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here, and thank you for your patience with your young ladies.
Sophia Arith.
Oh, Sophia. Oh, good job. Welcome.
All right, there you go. Good afternoon. My name is Sophia. I am great daughter of Marcy Hers. I am in second grade at Lenz Elementary School. I think learning is important, and so does my great-grandma. She was a dedicated teacher and believed in, in being kind to others. Teach each other as you want to be treated. Marcy was a strong role model and a hero for, of mine. I wrote a book about her, and I, wait, and want to show you it. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, well done, Sophia.
It's all about me inside.
Oh, that's so great.
Is that Marcy skiing, or is that you skiing?
Yeah, that's Marcy.
Oh, great.
And some more? And some more people skiing?
That's, um, my grandpa Howdy.
Oh, Howdy. Oh, Marcy and Howdy. Oh, and...
That's me. I did that book for school, and I wanted to come here and show you it.
That is fantastic. Thank you so much. Okay, who wants to follow that? Just saying.
Todd Torvinen.
Mr. Torvinen, welcome. Nice to see you.
Good afternoon, trustees. My name is Todd Torvinen, and I'm a graduate of the junior ski program. I just want to share a few quick stories about the grit, the heart, and the ideals of Marcy Hers and how it changed the world. The first one comes from a client of mine, Bernice Martin Matthews. About a year and a half ago, she was sitting in my office, and I tried like heck to get her here, and I just couldn't. Bernice is not any younger than, she's not a young person anymore. I did try. But a year and a half ago, she's sitting in my office, she tells me this story. You know, Todd, when I, in the 50s, I had these little kids, and representatives from the junior ski program came to the Second Baptist Church, the African-American church, traditionally in this town, and said, "Sign up your kids." And Bernice did, her three boys and her nephew. She's still a big, big believer in the program, but this goes to Marcy's ideal that all kids should get the opportunity to ski, no matter what color, no matter what socioeconomic background, and that's why that program started as a volunteer-based program, and he heard the oldest and largest in the country. That heart, that belief, that desire continues in this town. And Marcy was not a person to blow her own horn. What she did, she did quietly, and she accomplished these things in a time that was, I'm trying to find the right words, not, not as friendly to females as it is perhaps now. And that's a testament to her grit, which is my next story. Marcy said, and this came from Howdy's mouth, he's sitting back there, that's her son. Marcy was a championship skier and won the Nevada State Ski Championship on the Silver Dollar Derby downhill, which started at the top of Slide Mountain, went down to Valley Four. Two miles long, speeds in excess of 60 miles an hour on very, very inferior equipment. She won that race. Marcy's quote, "You've got to be cruel to run downhill." She's right. And so about a few months ago, I was sitting at a function, and I ran into Pat Myers, who in 1954, 1954, won the NCAA downhill championship on that hill, that two-mile downhill. Unlike most downhills, that one gets steeper and tougher and harder at the bottom. Anyway, Pat says, "You know what, Todd? Marcy, one, was the smartest person I ever met, and two," and I don't know the meaning of this, he said, "You know, Todd, I was only coached by Marcy and Doty Post, only women, and it made me a different skier." Now, I never got to follow up with that, Patrick, he's still alive, about what that means, but it affected his skiing. And that grit is what I would at least attribute that. Pat's great performance, too. And the last thing, you can draw, give me five seconds, you can draw a direct line between Marcy and all these champions, Doty Post, Pat Myers, Tamara McKinney, Lane Spina, and finally David Wise. Please choose Marcy. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Torvinen.
That's all for this item.
Okay. Is there anybody else who's here who would like to speak on this item, who has not spoken on the item yet? Okay, last chance. All right. Well, we'll bring it back to the board. Trustees, comments, thoughts? Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to start off by first thanking everybody that came to, well, people that have submitted comments about different candidates, and certainly the people that came here today, and how neat that two of the three finalists that are being recommended to us, you know, both very strong, intelligent, accomplished women, and I think it's really neat that one of them is here in person and also had family and friends come to support her. And then the other one, Marcy Hers, she's not with us anymore, but she had, she's had family and friends that have come to support her. So, I just think that that's really neat. As for me, I mean, the naming geographically is just, it's not something I, I think that we should do, whether it's Arrow Creek or Thomas Creek. I mean, those are both neighborhoods in, in South Reno, they're both major streets in South Reno, but as, as one of the speakers had mentioned, this new middle school, the feeder neighborhoods that would go into it are much more than just Arrow Creek and Thomas Creek. You know, there's Saddlehorn, Galena, and there's other neighborhoods. So, for me, it really does come down to the, the two women, Marcy Hers and Ann Carlson. And when it comes to a decision like this, I mean, I, I really, really rely on, first off, the committee, you know, the naming committee who just does such terrific work, and, and they've had the experience now of, of doing several schools, where they've vetted all the different name suggestions, they've done their research, they've, they've looked at all these different things. And so I think it was really telling to me that they so clearly stated that Marcy Hers was their preference all, all the way across the board. Another thing that, and this is just with my own, I had a chance to, to visit some, visit Hunsburger a couple times, and to visit Lenz, just to ask different elementary classrooms what they thought about the finalist names. And most of them, when I said show of hands, most of them liked Marcy Hers, because a lot of them were skiers, snowboarders, sledders. So, I thought that was kind of neat, just an informal poll that they also leaned that way. And then I think the third reason, so of course, I think I would support Marcy Hers. I also like just the fact that there's a really strong potential for a partnership between this new middle school and the Sky Tavern. And Sky Tavern, of course, could bring, you know, a lot of, could support for the new middle school, a lot of, you know, businesses and philanthropists could come along with it. And so, while I really, really respect Ann Carlson, and I really hope that the committee looks at her for a future school for the new middle school, I, I would support Marcy Hers as my final suggestion.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Kelly, and we appreciate the, the work you've done in your district to, to work on the naming of this school. So, thank you. Other trustees? Other comments? Vice President Raymond.
I would agree, I, it's really hard because they are both, I would, I should say, I agree with Trustee Kelly in that I think it really comes down to two. For me, I don't see Arrow Creek as a viable name for various reasons, and it's really tough when you're talking about two incredible female role models in this community and that have obviously both contributed so much in so many ways, but I, I do sort of come back to what Trustee Kelly also mentioned, that kind of connection with the location. And I loved what somebody said about her kind of looking down, I'm going to get emotional about it, from Sky Tavern. So, I think I am leaning towards Marcy Hers. Sorry. I don't know why I got emotional.
It's an emotional thing. Yes, Trustee Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, sometimes you, these decisions are really easy. You know, they come forward, it's very, very clear, one clearly has a distinction over the other. And I, I personally know Ann Carlson and know personally of her work, as many here have, and many of you know personally of, of Marcy Hers' work, and many of you heard of it, because you're fortunate enough to be some of her, her children and grandchildren, and even great-grandchild. For me, it's, it's a matter of a couple of things. One is, I know that the name Ann Carlson has, has been in the top three several times coming from the committee, and for one reason or another, has not quite come to, to the top, and that's, you know, and that's, and that's really unfortunate, because she has had a lifetime of service to education at every level in this community, and either directly or indirectly has impacted just so many lives. And it's not, I have nothing but honor and respect for Marcy as an athlete, as a leader, as a, as a woman doing those things in the 1950s, when you rarely saw anything like that. I'm sure she blew some people's minds, doing the thing that she, that she has done, the things that she has done. That's the second and the third thing for me is, it's hard to go against a unanimous vote of the committee. I mean, honestly, that's the, that's the factor, because I have this way and this way, but it's, the committee voted unanimously. It's a pretty, it's a pretty distinct, pretty clear preference from the committee, and unless, I think we as a, as a board have a really, really strong reason to go, to, to deviate, it's difficult to go against such a strong indication from the, from the committee. And then I'm going to concur with what my, with my colleague, Trustee Kelly, says, is just really, you know, encourage the committee to just, to, to continue to give a, a real good look to, to Ann Carlson, because I absolutely think that she deserves to have a school name. In fact, what more do you have to do? She absolutely deserves to have a, a school named after her. And I know it could, this school is meaningful because of Marcy's contributions in that area at Sky Tavern, whereas the geographical location isn't as meaningful for Ann Carlson, but certainly her, her contributions are worthy of it. So, I am absolutely hopeful. And committee, if you're listening, strongly encourage you to help us out, help us out. But for those things, those reasons, there was, I said three, I guess there are five, then I'm going to lean my support towards Marcy Hers.
Okay. Thanks, Dr. Taylor. Ms. Minneto.
Being a person who taught at Roger Corbett for four years, I'm a little biased, and she, Mrs. Carlson taught forever. I just think that says a whole lot, so I'm kind of leaning that way myself.
Okay, all right. And Trustee Calvert, did you want to add anything? You don't have to if you don't want to. Okay, all right. I'm really torn on this as well. This is a very difficult choice, and absolutely, we are, we are faced with two extraordinary women to name this, name this school after. I also appreciate the work of the committee, and I know that they waited through all of the material, they listened to comments at several meetings, they did, they did review a lot of comments and letters, and so I, I do generally like to support the work of, of our committees. I hope that there's another way that we can honor Mrs. Carlson, because I absolutely admire and respect and appreciate and value her service, not just at Roger Corbett Elementary School, but throughout the community, all of the work and the continuing work on College of Education Advisory Board, et cetera, which is very much in keeping with the spirit of our, of our naming criteria, a person who has made an impact on, on education. And at the end of the day, I also respect and honor the committee's deliberation and, and will support, support Marcy Hers as the name for the school. And again, I hope there's another way we can honor Mrs. Carlson, because it's been an extraordinary career and continues to be this day, and we, we appreciate that very much. Does anyone want to make a motion? Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the Board of Trustees selects Marcy Hers for the official name of the new middle school in the Arrow Creek area of South Reno.
Is there a second? Second by Trustee Cottle. Is there further discussion? Okay, again, very difficult decision, and we, we honor and thank everyone for their contributions to this process. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? That's okay. Thank you, Ms. Trustee Minneto. Okay, so that is six to one with Trustee Minneto opposed, and the school will be named the Marcy Hers Middle School. So, thank you all. And thank you, Sophia, for coming down with your book. That was great. We loved that. That was nice. Okay. Oh, that is hard. Okay. Do we want to take a five-minute stretch break? No? Okay. All right, Lindsey, you're, you're here. Come on in. Step on up. We have two things left. Yeah. So, our next item on the agenda is presentation, discussion, possible action to provide direction related to current and proposed legislation during the 2019 Nevada Legislative Session based on the approved 2019 Washoe County School District Legislative Platform to include but not limited to support of whole and stable education funding, improving equitable access to relevant and rigorous education for all students, and providing a safe and respectful learning environment. And we'll give, we'll give you folks a moment to, we'll give you a moment to clear the chamber. Thank you so much for being here, and we do have additional business we need to move forward on. Okay. Why don't you go ahead, Lindsey? Thank you. And Lindsey, of course, we know you have been in Carson all day, so thanks for racing back. We know that you drove the speed limit, so we appreciate that.
If I could have done it again, I would have got here 10 minutes earlier. And I'm going back for a 6:30 hearing tonight, too. But thank you for having me. It feels like it's been a really long time since I've been here, since I missed one, and then we had spring break. So, and I know you've had a long day, I know you had a long morning talking about the budget, and that's a really important part of the legislative process, so I won't go into that. I'll just give you a little bit of an update, kind of a cursory update on a lot of different things, and then you tell me the things you want to go deeper into or want any kind of additional insight into. As you know, there's a, there's a, we're halfway, so that's sort of a blessing and a curse. It's like, we're already halfway? It's like, we're only halfway? But that's a good thing. And Friday, we have our first big deadline for policy bills to make it out of their first committee. So, after Friday, I think we'll have a better sense of what we're dealing with. There's a lot of bills right now and a lot of hearings, and so we'll be able to kind of clear the deck a little bit as we start next week for another deadline. So, there's some big steps happening right now. In fact, this morning was the first budget closings of some of the Department of Education accounts, so we're already closing budgets. So, that's an indication that things are, we're getting a little bit closer. So, the, the process is bills have to have a hearing in their committee, they have to be voted out of their committee by this Friday. So, the, the bills that I expect on the kind of big issues that are likely to survive the deadline, there was a hearing today on the read-by-grade-three modification legislation. Dr. McNeil joined me in Carson City, so I thank her for that. There's a couple of bills about collective bargaining that are going to live, a couple of bills about prevailing wage and their impact on school construction. There's one, one of the two bills on school lib- There's one of the two bills on school libraries is scheduled for a work session tomorrow. There's two bills on charter school, policy modifications, computer literacy and computer science, the definition of school volunteer and fingerprinting the regular volunteer. That bill's already been moved out of committee. Couple of bills on addressing teacher pipeline issues, and those are sort of bigger picture committees to study over the interim, that kind of thing. And a couple of bills around public records. A couple of bills that have had a hearing but are not scheduled for a work session this week, that doesn't mean they won't be. We still have three more days. A lot of things can happen on Friday at 11:59. There was a bill today about class size, mandatory class size reporting and reduction. There was a bill yesterday, I think you already heard about it, in public comment around data privacy, and the legislation that addressed the process for getting digital days approved. None of those have been scheduled for a work session at this point. Bills that have not had a hearing at all, and so would be a really fast process, although they suspended the rules today, so they can hear a bill and vote on it in the same day. So anything can happen, are around the appointed school board members and the additional adding of two additional school board trustees. Neither of those two bills have had a hearing at this point. So there's so many, and I only want to talk about the things that you all want to talk about. I know you've had a good, I mean, a long day, always good. So I'll just leave it at that, unless there's something you want to talk about, whether it's the budget or bills, and if Superintendent Davis wants to add any color commentary, I'd certainly welcome that. And so I'll just leave it at that.
Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. And Lindsey, thank you so much. I have no idea what it's like to be you, but I know it's really, really hard right now. Would go with that. Anything on, with any conversation around share or the sex education, I know it's supposed to come back up, and any update on that?
Good one. I should have had that on my list. There is a bill on it, and it has not been scheduled for a hearing yet. There's, you know, there's kind of some rules that if there's a financial impact to a piece of legislation, it can be exempt from all the deadlines. So I don't want to say that it's necessarily dead, but it hasn't been scheduled for a hearing at this point. So it's out there, it exists, but there's been no action taken on it.
Trustee Cottle?
Yeah, when I saw that SB 403 came up, frankly, I was kind of relieved, because I was hoping that we would get some state direction on the protection of student data, see if it was bipartisan support. Frankly, personally, I was disappointed to see the Washoe County School District oppose it. And I would like, ask why would Washoe County oppose this bill when it seemed like there were so many groups on both ends of the aisle that supported it? Because it seems pretty cut and dry on what SB 403 is trying to do. Thanks.
Sure. Lindsey Anderson. So the benefit that I have is this amazing group of subject matter experts that work for the school district and review the legislation and bring up issues that they see. So I don't know if Robert's still here. He can come sit next to me, like he did yesterday at the hearing. And I do want to say that we met with a bill sponsor in advance of the bill hearing. We had about an hour conference call going through section by section, and in large part, we support the intent and parts of the bill. But the way the rules are written, that if you don't support the bill as it is written exactly, then you can't support the bill in a committee. So there were particular sections that we identified as potential issues for our school district. I'll let Robert talk to the technical part of it. I think one of the issues is around, you mentioned state control. I was going to say, our board platform includes a local control provision allowing us to adopt a policy that works for our school district. And that is important to us, to make sure that they're not, you know, forcing us to change the way we think that our students can be protected. But I'll let Robert talk about the technical components that we're concerned with. And I will say that I'm hopeful there can be some small changes made, and we can get to support on that piece of legislation.
Thanks, Lindsey. For the record, Robert Sidford, Chief Information and Innovation Officer, and I appreciate your comments. Thank you for that. We actually support, there's three main components to the bill. One is around student data privacy, which we actually support, and the efforts that I mentioned to you today are actually in direct agreement with that and would put us in a really good spot as a district around that, and make sure that we are doing everything we can to protect student data privacy around that. Another component which we also support is the notification to parents of potential risks around the use of student data by vendors, and we support that as well. The one section that we are concerned about at this point is the requirement for parental consent for the use of any technology in our schools. And that is actually in direct contravention to our board policy and direction in our strategic plan that helps students to be ready for careers in colleges in the 21st century. And so we're concerned that if we're allowing for parents to make the determination around whether technology is used in our schools, it would limit our ability to prepare students for the modern world, to provide them with standards-based education, which, as I mentioned earlier, it's integrated through the standards. So our ability to make sure that students have an alternate opportunity to have an equivalent educational experience really isn't possible without the use of technology. And so that's really primarily our objection to that particular bill.
Robert, just to clarify, so that's not saying that the parents would be directing what the school district does. It would be that, it would be a completely opt-in situation rather than an opt-out situation?
For the record, Robert Sidford, yes, that's correct. It would be an opt-in. It would be verified parental consent.
For all of our 64,000 students, we would have to have an affirmative opting in to be able to use any educational technology with them, which I think we can get to a resolution about that, but I think that's what you're saying the crux was.
As written, it says all technology, each item of technology, I don't remember the exact terminology, but for every technology. So we'd be managing consent for every item of technology, and no definition of technology is presented in there in the bill as written.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I think, obviously, it may not matter, based on what you said, Lindsey, if it doesn't even survive this week. But if it were to look like it's going to survive, I would say, I mean, if I can be of any help to talk with them, to see if we can get to a place where we can protect student data without making it so difficult to do so. But I mean, it can be a different conversation down the road if it happens to survive the week, or if it comes back up. Because I'm assuming there's a fiscal note on it, so it could come back to life in May or something. But I was, just my concern, because I think for me, I would like to get us to a point to where we can have this done, where here's how we're going to protect student data from free vendors, from contracted vendors. And if the state makes it easier for us to all be under one umbrella, great. But I want to get us to that point, and if that means the state, if it's us. But I think it deserves more conversation if the bill survives.
Robert?
Thanks. For the record, Robert Sidford, just to be clear as well, we're going to be in compliance with the data privacy protections that are included in SB 403 as it's currently written. It's just the technology component. So either way, we're already going to be doing those things with the information that I presented to you today.
Great. Good to hear.
And I just want to add, I didn't mean to imply that it wasn't going to move forward. I am actually really hopeful we talked to the bill sponsor today about it. So he's more than willing, he met with us before, understood our concerns, wants to address them, mentioned in the hearing, he wants to get there. You know, I think, just to be clear, we're not the only school district with, you know, that kind of concern. So I am very hopeful we're going to get to a place of support, and the bill will move on.
Great. Okay. I wanted to ask about the school libraries bill. So what's happening with that?
So there were two bills around school libraries and librarians. The one that has been scheduled for a work session is Senate Bill 191, which is Senator Joyce Woodhouse's bill, which right now does include paraprofessionals as complying with the law. I think the greater intent is around making sure that we don't transform our school libraries into a different, you know, use of the room, not necessarily the staffing of it. So I think there'll be changes to that bill continuing to go forward. But of the two bills, this has the lower impact on the Washoe County School District and would not require a certified librarian in elementary schools. It does include the use of paraprofessionals.
Great. Okay. Thank you. What else?
A quick question.
Yeah.
So I know read-by-three was today. Did they have any discussion on disproportionality in the data with automatic retention?
There was a really comprehensive presentation about what the data looks like, how many students we're talking about from a retention component, and some of their socioeconomic and demographic characteristics. Yes, there was a discussion about that. I think the hearing went really well. I think there were some good policy points brought up, and so I expect that to continue to move forward. There's a large working group. We were there last night till late, hashing out the details of how we would distribute read-by-three dollars on a formula basis as opposed to a competitive grant basis, which has been a priority for the district in limiting the number of competitive grants that we're managing. So I think there's some really good work around it. And yes, I think the idea around distributing the money to where the schools need it and addressing the disproportionality in the retention data was a big part of the conversation.
And I just want to thank you and Kristen both for going down today, because I couldn't. So thank you, Lindsey, for reading my testimony, and thank you, Kristen. Because I think it's important when we talk about automatic retention of students and don't consider a lot of factors, including the ability of parents to advocate, who won't know how to advocate if their kid is being retained.
Okay. Vice President Raymond?
Thank you for being here. I just wondered if there was any updates to that bill for the background checks for volunteers?
Yes. So I believe it's Senate Bill 185, is Senator Ganser's bill that refined the definition of what a school volunteer is. And the bill that was presented and amended a few times with some additional language removes the word "regular" altogether, and includes just volunteers who are unsupervised with students. There's some definition in there about what it means to be unsupervised. I mean, literally, like, I can't remember off the top of my head, but within 60 feet or eye line or something like that, a very specific definition of what it means to be unsupervised with students. So we didn't accidentally capture people that were just walking down the hallway with, you know, kids reading on the side or something like that. So we've been working diligently with her. I think the definition is at a place where we all supported it, and will really help minimize over-identifying people that will have to go through the background check process.
And Lindsey, I know we all appreciate all that you do there, so thank you for all the time. And thank your family for us, because I know, I hope your children still recognize you when you get home late at night. Can you update everybody on school funding?
If you'd love me to.
I mean, I know you're very close to it, and there are folks that are very close to it, but I know a lot of our constituents are, you know, always asking, so what's happening? And we've encouraged them to stay tuned with what's happening. So I know not a lot is being concluded yet.
I think, you know, it's early. The budget process really doesn't get any legs to it until really the end of May, when we get a lot more information specifically about district-level funding. I do think the preliminary numbers that are out include a 1.42% increase in the basic support per pupil. That's not necessarily considering, you know, other revenues we may have. I think there is a laser focus from the legislative leadership on making sure that that is enough to cover our budget and the proposed 3% raise that the governor mentioned in his State of the State address. So I think, at the same time of trying to fund those things, we're trying to manage the kind of unfunded mandates that are lingering out there, and how many more things that schools could do to support students. I'm hopeful. I think all the right people are in the right rooms, having the right conversations. I think there's a lot of anxiety around the new funding formula that's been talked about a lot, but not yet released yet. I don't want to jinx it, but I would say in the next week or so, we'll probably have a better sense of what the new funding formula looks like and how that would impact the Washoe County School District now and going forward. It's probably not going to have a big impact this biennium, but going forward. So I'm hopeful, I guess. It's tough. I, you know, I sat through the technology presentation and heard the ratios, and I think you're right. You know, we're having these conversations about today, class size and mandating lower class sizes and all the things we want to do. But I do think that there's just not enough money right now to do them all. And so it's going to be a really painful process of prioritization.
Okay. Thank you for commenting on it.
Yeah.
Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. Lindsey, this, many of us, when we're out talking to people, we regularly hear from our constituents, we thought we voted marijuana money to go to schools and so on. Is there any conversation around that that you may be able to share?
There's a great slide, I wish I had it, that shows a bucket and money going into the bucket, and then a hole in the bucket where a different amount of money comes out the bottom. So technically, the wholesale tax on marijuana that was included in the ballot question is being deposited into the distributive school account. That is happening. I think part of the problem is the way the formula works, what we've seen in the past is that decreases the general fund contribution from the state, so we don't see it as additional revenue. But we're, that money technically is going into the distributive school account, just not in an additive fashion at this point. There is conversation, I think we've talked about this before, about the retail tax, the 10% retail tax on recreational marijuana that's being generated, that's right now going to the state's rainy day fund. In the governor's recommended budget, that money is used to fund the school safety initiatives that came out of the previous governor's interim task force on school safety. So I think that would be used for education. I'm not sure it's exactly, you know, the use, but again, that wasn't really part of the ballot question. That was an additional legislative measure that was taken in 2017. So I hear it all the time, too, and I wish I had a better answer. Technically, that money is going to education, just not in a way that is helping us address the needs of our schools.
And may I, and it doesn't seem like that will change anytime soon?
There's not any pending legislation that would require, you know, additive as opposed to supplanting that legislation. But I do think that's all part of the very complex budget-making process that we're in the middle of, and how difficult it is to see the money that goes in and how it comes out and what happens in the middle. I do think that's a challenge.
Thank you.
Mr. Cottle?
Thanks. You had mentioned something about collective bargaining. From what I've heard, collective bargaining talks are starting around state employees. Is there anything in the works that will affect the school district?
A couple of different things. I would say the largest impact, at least again, kind of from the feedback I've gotten from the team, is there's legislation to change. Some changes that were made in 2015 around removing the, what we call the evergreen clause, that would prevent contracts from going forward until a new contract was entered into. So there's a provision that's moving forward right now that would eliminate that evergreen clause, which would allow contracts to basically be in place until a new contract was reached. And I think that's a relatively significant change, at least from the district perspective, as we go into collective bargaining with so many of our collective bargaining units. And there's some other changes, too. I don't have them off the top of my head, but I can certainly point you to the legislation that deals with collective bargaining. And that would affect all local governments. You know, it's not directed at school districts in particular at this point. There's a separate piece of legislation that would allow state employees to collectively bargain, but there's a couple other policy bills that impact existing collective bargaining units.
And those evergreen clauses weren't a problem until we had a recession. And when our revenues started constricting, which they may again, when those long-term contracts were in place, particularly for local governments that had three- and five-year contracts, they were essentially handcuffed to providing those increases even though the revenues had gone down. So it's a tough issue. It's a really tough issue. Other questions for Lindsey? Well, we're very grateful. I know you'll keep us posted on things. We do have public comment on this item. JJ?
John Appolito.
My computer. Does this work? Can I turn on?
Wait, you push the button. There you go.
Okay. John Appolito, President of Protect Nevada Children. I have to leave my computer plugged in. I'm a former teacher, and I have three kids left in the district. It's, I'm glad to hear that Edmodo will not be sanctioned by the district any longer. It took over a year to get here, but I guess that's, at least we got here. Even if there's never another data breach or sale to foreign company slash government, this, to me, is about the district control versus parental control of their students' data with these free, third-party ed tech vendors. I do believe that's what we're down to. I heard what Lindsey just said, and what they can't support is the parentals, a parent I heard what Lindsay just said, and what they can't support is the parental's, a parent's right to consent to use technology. Well, I can tell you right now, that's what I heard, my kids will not be using the school email, the school computers, or logging into any website for schoolwork. I can tell you that right now. I don't care what you guys decide. All parents should have that right, and all parents should have an informed decision. If parents want to do it, that's great. If parents don't want to do it, they shouldn't be forced to do it. And I believe that's what Robert's saying, especially in these one-to-one schools. Parents deserve to know what data these free ed tech vendors will collect, store, analyze, and share, and if it will ever be deleted, and how this may affect the future of their children. For over two years, Washoe County School Districts had decided to keep parents in the dark. And now we have a bill to protect kids, and Washoe County School District is the only entity in the state who will publicly oppose this bill. Senator Kiekeffer took his kids out of Edmodo. He probably reads my emails. A lot of other people don't want their kids using technology. It's not that we don't want them to learn the software. We want them coding. We want them to learn the Microsoft. We don't want them using the free third-party ed tech vendors who are paid with student data. That's what we don't want them doing. I'm not sure if we can come to agreement on that or not. Maybe I can find out. The fiscal note was $400,000 per year for Washoe County School District. I think that will be nothing compared to the class-action lawsuit once parents do discover what you've been holding back from them. So I don't think the $400,000 is anything. If teachers have to come up with two lessons sometimes, so be it. Again, Incline High School, we were the first one-to-one school, high school, in Washoe County School District. The good news for me is, it appears, most of our excellent teachers at Incline High School have not bought into the program. So it's good for me. I can protect my kids. I'm not here to protect my kids. I'm here to protect the other 64,000. Please delete my kids' email addresses. They will never be used. And my last question, last year, my eighth graders could log in anonymously to school computers. This year, they can't. How come? Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Appolito. Is there more public comment?
Chris Empley?
Mr. Empy?
Yes. Hello again. Sorry for the ramblings earlier. Bit nervous. It's an issue close to my heart, given it's my kids. Again, I'm talking about the moving of the Gifted and Talented SWAS Program from Jerry Whitehead to Roy Gom, where the other three SWAS programs are in the entire Washoe County School District. Reno. I think this should be called the Reno-Washoe County School District. I mean, it seems like it's mostly supporting Reno. You know, and the other thing is, there's so much to say, and really, it's a blip. My kids, my child and the other 13 kids, they're not even a speed bump with respect to what you guys have to deal with in the budget. So it may seem like I'm a complaining parent, but, you know, some of the words you have, I just want to go over a couple things. You know, 3.01, it includes improving equitable access to relative and rigorous education for all students. You know, per NRS, specifically NRS 388.5253, you guys were given federal, or state funds, $2 million this year, $2 million next year. So by those funds going to the Reno SWAS programs and leaving no SWAS program in Sparks, and I'm not saying Whitehead, anywhere northeast, you're leaving a black hole in the community that's going to be hard to replace. A black hole. It's just, where are those kids going to go? Secondarily, per your board policy, 6525, students shall have equitable access to academically challenging and appropriate curriculum and services. Well, I mean, it's just 13 students being on the bus an hour and a half each way. I guess that's equitable. I don't know. Overall, I did look at the data. I requested data. I know you guys are big on data. Based on your own data, for the last four years of roll-up data, basically, the Sparks Elementary SWAS Program is the second biggest, or excuse me, third biggest, with the middle school being the largest at Mendite that's moving to Sky Ranch. So you guys are taking away from that overall process. So I don't have, I mean, you don't respond now, but it would be interesting to know how you're going to use that $2 million and how you justify that being equitable access. You talked about disproportionality. I'd like to see those numbers for the SWAS program, Ms. Davis. I really would. And, you know, one thing I do want to say, though, Ms. Simon-Holland, I really was impressed by your leadership of Washoe County as the county manager during the recession you previously mentioned. During a time when money was tight, you gave up part of your salary. It was nice to see that from a leader. Rather than extending a handout, asking for more money, you were giving money back. Maybe that can be exemplary to other executive leadership staff within the school district. Don't take it away from the teachers. We know they're underpaid.
Thank you, Mr. Empy. Thank you.
Very well.
Okay. I do want to have an opportunity, and I see Mr. Appolito is still here, to just clarify the statements made by Mr. Sidford and Ms. Anderson, that we are not saying that parents should not have the right to make technology decisions. We clarified that in the discussion. And we do absolutely support virtually all the rest of the legislation, all the provisions that were proposed, as Mr. Sidford said. The clarification was that we wanted to have an opt-out provision as opposed to every one of the 64,000 students' parents having to initiate and opt-in to utilize educational programming.
For each device.
For each device. So we'll get there. I think we will get there. And again, we support every other major element of the legislation. So if I misstated that, Mr. Sidford or Ms. Anderson, please correct me.
For the record, Robert Sidford, excuse me, I've got a frog in my throat. Apologize. The clarification would be that we're not in support of an opt-out or an opt-in provision because we are unable to provide a standards-based education to our students with, if we have some students opting out. Part of the issue is that if teachers have to prepare two sets of lesson plans to meet the needs of two different sets of students, that's a concern for us, for workload for teachers. It will also make it very difficult for us to meet, excuse me, also make it very difficult. I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought there, too. It will also make it very difficult for us to...
Well, so you're supporting two systems, so, yeah.
Yes, yeah, I apologize for...
I do think that's, you know, that's a concern for me, that we don't have any way to opt-out. So we may want to have further discussion about that at some point. But I do understand the practical realities of that. But regarding the rest of the legislation, we are in support of the rest of the legislation, and we'll have further conversations.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, any other public comment on 3.01? Okay, all right. Then we will move on to the, let's see, 4.03. And David, are you going to be part of this discussion? No? Okay, it's just the board. And thank you for, Trustee Caudill, for raising this issue about possible action to change the start time of regular meetings of the Board of Trustees. It's something that I had had conversations with staff about before as well. So we did not have the ability to take action in the previous discussion about this, but it seemed like there was some support for that. Trustee Caudill, do you want to say anything?
Sure, yeah. I know we had discussion about that at our marathon meeting about a month ago. Dr. Taylor was on a beach in Houston somewhere, so she wasn't a part of the conversation. But I think where we ended the discussion was, we were talking about 4:00 PM, doing our consent and other items on the agenda that the public may not have as much interest in, so that the meat of the agenda would land at a time where the public, parents and teachers and staff could attend to take part in the discussion. That's where I remember it leaving, but we couldn't take action at the time.
Trustee Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, colleague. I was working in San Antonio. Anyway, I have a couple of questions because I was not able to be involved in the meeting. Did we ask, did we get any research on other school districts or governing bodies around? Do we have any, just to see, that may have been a part of the conversation, and if not, that's okay. I have another question, too.
No, but I know that Clark County, it's in the evenings. Sometimes they change theirs, and they change their locations depending on what's on the agenda. But I know Clark County meets in the evenings. I think theirs is a little later than 4:00 from what I saw, but Clark was in the evening.
Christie Minneto?
I don't know how fancy this data is, but when I was in Philadelphia and mentioned to people that we have our meetings at 2:00, rooms of people gasped and said, "That would never fly where we are."
And I understand from staff that we have historically tried different times, and it hasn't necessarily had a huge impact on participation, but that doesn't mean it wouldn't now. I am a huge supporter of moving the start time of the regular meetings later in the day. I also think at some point we might consider having our general public comment after consent because consent is, we need the staff there for that, but we don't need people...
You can't...
You can't? You can't move public comment after?
You have to have public comment before actions taken, except for...
Well, we, okay.
You have to have public comment before any action is taken, except for the approval of the agenda. That's the one.
Well, we would still have public comment on the consent agenda items.
Or, okay, if we wanted to do it on the consent agenda items...
Right. But the people that want to just come and talk about anything...
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we'd still have public comment on every item on the agenda allowable, but the general public comment that's for items not on the agenda, but that's not on the agenda. What's on the agenda is discussion of the time. And, yes, Dr. Taylor?
And would we be looking at, like, starting next school year? I mean, there's no reason to delay it any...
No, I think we can start as soon as the staff can make it happen. But I'm open to hearing from, oh, I'm getting a really bad face from David.
Thank you. David Lees, Chief of Staff, for the record. We have a couple of big meetings coming up, and especially one at a school, which is a later start time. So I would actually support that if we could start it, you know, the next school year, summer, July, whatever. The next few board meetings will be larger ones. The May one will be at a school, which will be later anyways, North Valleys High School. And then we have the graduation one, so that might be a little funky anyway. So I would suggest after graduation.
Starting the 1st of July?
Okay, yeah, 1st of July, new school year, new... Yeah, I just wanted to know if you had, if you had chatted about that. And part of my question on that is just, will that give us a chance to gather some other info so we can see? Or do we not, are we not concerned about what may be happening in the rest of the state? I mean, it's...
I'm personally not concerned about what other school districts are doing. I'm concerned about what we're doing and the requests we've had. But that's just me.
No, I just, and it's probably time to change it to four. So let me say my personal opinion of that, yes, but we typically are pretty good about gathering data to see what other folks are doing. So that's why I put that out there. And the other comment, and since we aren't starting it until then, they may give us the time to do that, so there's nothing lost in that. It doesn't delay the implementation. And another thing I would say is, based upon what you said, President Simon-Holland, I think you're right. If it hasn't happened in the past, doesn't mean it won't happen now. And so maybe we do that, and then we take a look, like, in a year and see if there's been an impact or something like that, and just have a discussion. Doesn't mean we change anything, but we have a discussion about it. So those are my comments about it.
Okay. Christie Minneto?
I think it's a matter of the appearance of transparency to our parents and our teachers, to some extent, whether they come or not. We appear to be transparent. We're doing it when you guys can be here.
Vice President Raymond?
This is sort of repeat for everyone, except for Dr. Taylor, because she wasn't here. But I would just ask, again, that we do look at it maybe on a trial basis or look at it, just reevaluate it in a year. And part of that is that we, I don't feel that we have excluded people from coming to the meetings entirely because we often go well beyond 4:00 PM and have public comment at the end of our meetings. But it does have a pretty significant impact on the staff members that are reporting to us. And so I just would like the opportunity to revisit it at some point and see, you know, disproportionately, how is it impacting different employee groups and the public? I mean, if we do see a significant increase, then that, I think, outweighs it. But if we don't, then I just think it's worth having the conversation again about, you know, what is it meaning for the staff that are, need to be here for their board meetings and are part of that conversation.
Absolutely. And I think that was, I think that was part of the discussion about having it at 4:00 as opposed to having it in the evening, which would be another option and makes it very difficult for the staff that would, you know, that would have to stay. I personally would like to take action today and not require other research to be done before we take the action to make the decision. I think it's, you know, it's fine if people want to collect information. I think that's always a good thing, to have a pilot period where we review whether it has changed anything or not. I think that's useful. So pleasure of the board. What's the pleasure of the board? Madam Motion Maker?
No, this is not motion time yet. This is still a comment. Until you're BFF, I still got you. Okay, so then maybe perhaps then, what we would do is during that period of, just look back at it in a year, during that time, we can still gather, and not that it's a big national research project, because that isn't what we're talking about, but we can bring in some other data so that when we do look at it a year from now, we can look at just how it's happened here, how we felt about it, you know, who's coming, how much our teachers and parents have been, and students, right, are benefiting from it and coming and taking advantage, and at the same time, take a look at. I do think it's important to, I mean, in just about everything we do, we look at data. So I don't want this to be any different. I think it's important to have that opportunity to do that as well.
Well, I haven't had a single, since I've been answering emails, I haven't had a single email that said, "I love the start times of the meetings." And I've had several that say they don't, but that's not a, you know, that's not a representative sample, but it is the data that I have, so. Okay. Is there a motion? Anyone have a motion?
I'll make it. I've been making them all day. I'll make it.
Okay.
I move that the, that beginning July 1, the Board of Trustees moved back the start time of our general meetings, regular meetings...
Regular.
Regular meetings to 4:00 PM, and that we reevaluate it in a year. And that reevaluation will also include an examination of other districts in the state and like bodies in our community due for their start times.
Okay. Okay, second by Trustee Caudill. And is there, is there any further discussion on that item? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so five to two. Okay, all right. Well, thank you all. Appreciate it. And we have more items to go through here. We have board reports. Do we have board reports? Anyone want to comment? It's been quite a time since we were together. Anyone? Trustee Caudill?
Yeah, so I did a lot of things before the district spring break because the university spring break was before the district spring break. So I took the opportunity to go out and do some things, did a few school visits, Cold Springs Middle, Silver Lake, and Van Gorder Elementary Schools, did two staff meet-and-greets at Van Gorder and Taylor, appreciative of the principals, had the opportunity to do two bus ride-alongs... Had the opportunity to do two bus ride-alongs, which was very interesting. Did one down south. The bus driver's named Chris. She's been driving for 10 years, so appreciative to her. And the other one's in the north. Bus driver's Rick. He's been driving for four years. That was pretty awesome to, to see what their days are like. Visited the teacher warehouse, nutrition services, the electrician's training center, which is an apprenticeship program, which is awesome. Did a Spanish Springs High School Zone concert, did a police ride-along with Sergeant Olivero. Joined many of my colleagues at lunch at AACT, and did a visit with Trustee Manetto and Trustee Calvert to Turning Point, Pacolo Inspire Innovations, and Norstar, thanks to Byron Green for setting that up. So stayed busy right before the spring break.
I'll say you did. Okay. Anyone else want to share some of their activities? Trustee Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't, I don't want to share our activities just because it's late. However, I did want to, want to thank those who have, those of you who have brought items forward for the Teacher Appreciation Week. Trustee Calvert brought the gift certificate and working on something else, and Trustee Caudill, a ticket deal, which is actually the week before Teacher Appreciation Week, but there are no home baseball games the week of or after. That's the last of the home games. And so we'll figure out the best way to do that. But there's some pretty neat things that we're working on. And so just as a reminder, if any of you have any resources you may be able to tap into, that's either for everybody, or something that's for the shop tea drop day and raffle prizes, any of those things can be put to good use and just add to our ways that we're saying thank you to our teachers. Some of the things, I think all of us are involved in donut delivery on that first Monday. We're working out a way to have free ice cream for teachers one of those days that week that we don't have to deliver because we're running our delivery out a lot, and we want them to actually still have the ice in the cream by the time they get there. And then also, we're working on, and I, and we've nailed down actually free pizza. Working on that delivery on Friday. So we have a lot of great things, a lot of other discounts and so on. So please shake some trees. We want our teachers to really know, or, and actually, we're including everyone. So the staff in these, we don't want to leave anybody out. So anything that you can add to it, the one item or a bunch, then please do, just let me know.
And thank you so much, Dr. Taylor, for all of your work on that, as long, or as well as the staff committee that's working on it. Really, really great to, to put that effort into it. So thank you for working on that.
No, thanks to the staff. I mean, they, they, they work really hard on making this happen, so.
That's great. Well, I certainly haven't been as busy as Trustee Caudill, but did get to do some fun things. With Superintendent, went to the reception for the National Board Certified Teachers, which was a great group, and very proud of all their efforts. Got to emcee the UNR College of Education Spring Awards, which Dr. Taylor had done last year, and that was great.
They fired you.
No, they didn't fire you. And then got to participate in the Gwynne Center Civil Discourse Dinner with Trustee Raymond, which was great. The Reno High School Orchestra Zone Concert. I went to JRO TC accreditation meetings in Incline, at Worcester, and Sparks. Did the talk with your trustee, with Trustee Caudill, and we had all of three people. But it was a good discussion. It was still a very good discussion. And then, of course, the, the School Board Association Conference in Philadelphia with several trustees, Manetto, Calvert, and Taylor. And then, of course, an enjoyable meeting with the governor last week with Superintendent and others. So, yeah, lots of things going on. Any other board reports? Okay, otherwise, we'll go to Superintendent report.
I don't think I have any report. Kristen and David will be mad. Did I miss something? I think everybody covered it.
Okay.
Thank all the employees who gave me the shout-out and watched my nephew, including you, Don, ex-HR, who called me, who watched. Second-place national dunk contest. Go, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no kidding. Very cool. Very cool. Okay, future agenda items? Do we have future agenda item requests? Dr. Taylor?
I wrote it down. Let's see. Oh, there is, there's a requirement, I believe it came out of the last session, for student financial literacy of some sort. Can we have a report on just what we're doing with that? I know what's happening. People ask me that from time to time. So we can have some, just some kind of report on that. It'd be great.
Good, okay. All right, any others? Yes, Vice President Raymond?
I'd like to ask for a presentation or report or something about our, the location of the SWAS, elementary SWAS programs. I know it came up in our budget conversations and the workshops, but I think it needs to be dealt with more urgently so that we can consider the options for the locations of those schools as a board.
Good, good, good discussion. I have, I have some. I'd like to have a presentation, and I talked to Sue about this, on grade level proficiency. What's, how are we doing and what are all the strategies that the district has in place to work on improving our grade level proficiency, because there's a lot going on. I also had a request to have Chris Riley from Tesla come in and talk to us about, just briefly, about what investments Tesla's making in education. And, and then I'd like to, at some point, have a discussion about alternatives or possible alternatives to the use of Roundup on our grounds. I've had this conversation with David a bit. City of Reno took action to discontinue that. I know some of the parks departments have discontinued it based on the recent information that's come out during legal action, so just wanted to have a review on that. Okay, any others? All right. Is there final public comment? No final public comment. So next meeting will be April 23, and that will be here, and that will be at 2:00 still. All right, we will consider our meeting adjourned.